Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority Meeting, December 9th, 2024. It is six o'clock, and I would ask that Captain Walker please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Proton Benable. Mayor Bieber.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, Kristen Dunlop, the Executive Director from YAPs, wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting with our Dog of the Month. I know that's something we look forward to, but we will see her after the new year with a whole new round of animals that are eagerly waiting adoption. Moving on to employee recognition, this goes over to Mr. Firmin Preciado.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I have the opportunity to say a few words to recognize Jackie Jones for her thirty-four-and-a-half, almost thirty-five-year tenure as an employee for the city of Ucaipa. But first, because Jackie has been at the city for so long and before, and she started here before the city began to introduce new employees to City Council, she did not receive her customary employee introduction to the council, so I'd like to introduce to you Jackie Jones, the Public Senior Development Services Technician for the city of Ucaipa. I always told Jackie that I was going to do that, so I wanted to fulfill my promise, so thank you. So, less than a year after the city incorporated, in June of 1990 Jackie joined the small team of the city of Ucaipa as a part-time employee, and then several months later went on to become a full-time employee. I did find out the other day that Jackie is probably the only city employee that has worked for every department and every division at City Hall, so I guess when you're working for, when you start working for a small city with a small staff, that tends to happen. So, the majority of her time at the city, though, Jackie has worked in the Development Services Department, providing planning, public works, and engineering services to the public. This means that she has been a part of the development and the construction of almost every new home, new commercial development, and new public building that has been constructed in the city since the city incorporated. So, that's quite an accomplishment. I don't know if there's a lot of people who can say that nowadays, but her primary functions in the development process were ensuring that all the necessary permit applications, engineering plans, reports, and construction documents were processed appropriately for review and approval by the city. And then, once those buildings were constructed, Jackie was part of the Public Works Department to ensure that the public streets and the other public infrastructure to support the new development was maintained. She has dedicated herself to serving the residents of Ucaipa and for those individuals and organizations that have developed in Ucaipa, and those people who've been wanting to add on to their home or do, or build a new home or improve their property. Over the years, I'm happy to say that we have received so many positive emails, letters, phone calls from people that she has helped. These people have commended her for her public service. Over the last thirty-four years, she has helped so many people and left a positive impression that people often recognize her outside of work and will stop and say hi. This happens a lot when they see her outside of work, and this is, not only happens here in the city of Ucaipa, but also outside the city. And I think someone she helped even recognized her and said hi and thanked her in Europe when she was on vacation there at one time, so. I guess after over thirty-four years of service, something like that is bound to happen, right? So, and Jackie has also helped me and many other city employees when we first started working for the city, you know, by sharing her extensive institutional knowledge. I personally learned a lot from Jackie when I first came to work for the city many years ago, so thank you, Jackie. And so, Jackie, thank you for your dedication, for your dedication too and passion for public service. You've played a huge role in the city's growth, and the city's growth into this community where people want to live, work, and raise their families, so we wish you the best in your retirement moving forward, and thank you again for your thirty-four-and-a-half, almost thirty-five years of service. Thank you.
Wow. Well, thank you, thank you, everybody. And, yeah, this city of Ucaipa became part of my life big time, and I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to work and be a part of a community that is really a great community. And I'm going to miss a lot of people I have met, the most awesome people ever up here and working in Ucaipa. So, I just want to say thank you, and thank you all, and.
I got one question. Are you passing the whistle to somebody else?
I did purchase one to pass along to Kevin.
Great job.
So, Firmin did a phenomenal job presenting you from staff, and we would like to present on behalf of the City Council you with the Certificate of Appreciation and congratulations on your retirement. And we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Jaclyn Jones for thirty-four years of exemplary service to the city of Ucaipa. Through your dedication, you leave an incredible mark on the community of Ucaipa. On behalf of the City Council and the staff and the community of Ucaipa, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation for your service. We are proud to be your friends, and we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. And the city of Ucaipa seal has been a fix to this certificate, along with the City Council's signatures. Additionally, several years ago, the City Council made a purchase of challenge coins, and if you're not familiar with that, it's a tradition that started in the military and then went to law enforcement, and then it's grown to government. What it represents is being a part of something. The history of it is during the Civil War, when Americans were fighting Americans, it was easy to blend in and be part of the enemy. The United States military adopted special, unique buttons for each unit, and if you were ever separated from your unit, you would remove that button, hide it on your person, and you would challenge your way back to your friends, back to your family, back to your side. The city of Ucaipa has a challenge coin we'd like to present to you because you are part of this family, you are part of this team, and should you ever need to challenge your way back in, you have a coin of the city, and you are 100% a member of this team. So, thank you again so much for your dedicated service, Jaclyn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk, turn it over to you for the election results and the oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor as the elections official for the city of Ucaipa to present to you Resolutions 24-60, 2024-60, and 2024-61 declaring the results of the municipal election held on November 5th, 2024. The city of Ucaipa, in conjunction with the San Bernardino County Register of Voters, held a general election on Tuesday, November 5th, for the purpose of electing one member of the City Council for District 3, one member of the City Council for District 4, and one member of the City Council for District 5, each for the full term of four years and one ballot measure. The election results were certified on December 3rd by the ROV with the following outcome. Judy Woolsey was elected as councilmember for District 3, receiving 1,388 votes. Justin Bieber was reelected as councilmember for District 4, receiving 2,457 votes. John Thorpe was reelected as councilmember for District 5, receiving 4,193 votes. Measure S was approved by the voters with 15,260 votes in favor. In addition to the three seats and measure, a special recall election was held for the purpose of submitting the question of the recall of Matt Garner, councilmember District 1, to the voters. With 3,527 yes votes, councilmember Matt Garner is recalled from his position as councilmember in District 1. It is my recommendation that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2024-60 and Resolution Number 2024-61 officially certifying the election results.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to accept this election results? Motion made by Councilman Duncan.
I'll second.
Seconded and made by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, will you please initiate a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Benable.
Yes.
Mayor Bieber.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just a quick note, in addition to the resolutions that you just adopted, the council does deem adopted ordinance number 453, which is the text of the measure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I will administer the oath of office to all newly-elected councilmembers, starting with District 3, followed by Districts 4 and 5. All right. Okay, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Judy Woolsey.
I, Judy Woolsey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you, and then this is your official certificate of election.
Thank you.
Take a, where's our photographer? Who's doing our pictures? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would you like to hold it? Good with the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I, Justin Bieber.
I, Justin Bieber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Here's your official certificate of election. Congratulations, sir. Okay. Right over here. Is the height good for you?
It works.
Okay. All right. Raise your right hand, please. I, John Thorpe.
I, John Thorpe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, sir. And here's your official certificate of election. Good. Congratulations.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, Councilmember Woolsey, would you like to address the auditorium as our newly-elected councilmember? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. He didn't tell me I was going to have to do this, but it's a real pleasure to be here. I'm so honored that my district chose to elect me to this position. I totally plan on hopefully doing a great job to represent my district and also to represent the city of Ucaipa. And I am nervous, so.
That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Thorpe? Anything?
Well, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the community. Again, taken back by the election, I feel humbled, so thank you very much. I'm looking forward to another four years.
I would like to echo his sentiments. I'm very humbled, and I'm ready to get to work and represent the district that, no, represent the community I love. I've lived here my entire life. My family's been here since the 30s. I truly want only what's best for my hometown, for the place I call home, the place that I'm raising my daughter in. I don't want to do anything to embarrass my hometown, my family, or myself, so thank you for your support and I'm excited to get to work for y'all. All right. That was a landslide victory there, Councilman Thorpe. Nobody voted for the other person. All right. Madam City Clerk, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. At the November 13th, 2024 City Council meeting, the council gave direction for the City Clerk's office to move forward with the process of soliciting applications for an appointment to fill the upcoming vacancy and present the applicants for interviews at the December 9th, 2024 City Council meeting. As the election has now been certified, a vacancy in District 1 exists. The council may proceed with the applicant interview process. We received a total of four applications, which were included in the agenda packet. Over the weekend, applicant Joshua Moran withdrew his application, leaving us with three applicants here tonight. Each applicant will be allowed three minutes for opening remarks. The council will then have the opportunity to ask them each questions. Once all questions have been asked, the applicant will have three minutes for closing remarks. In order to ensure a fair process, the order in which the applicants will be interviewed will be selected at random by the wheel of names that we have here.
We are high-tech. Fireworks. I'm going to say Dr. Wong on that one, right?
Yes.
Looks like it's just this side of, all right.
Okay, so we have our order. It's going to be Bob Miller, Dr. Wong, and Holly Warner. Okay. Does the council have any questions before we get started?
After the applicant speak, is there an opportunity for public comment on the matter?
So, we will take all of the interviews first, and then we will accept public comment. I do have several cards. Some of them don't indicate whether they are for this item, so when we get to that portion, I will call the names of the residents, and then if it's for this item, we can move forward. If not, I'll hold the cards for public comment later on. For the record, you do have copies, printed copies of all of the applications, resumes, letters of recommendations that came with the applications. Those are all there for you. There's also a cover sheet on each one. It's just a note sheet, so you can take notes as the applicants are speaking. You can refer back to your notes, but if the council is ready, then we can get started.
Objections?
Okay, perfect. So, we have our city clerk staff is going to go ahead and bring Bob Miller shortly. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Do they have you come to this microphone, please? Welcome, welcome. As a reminder, you'll have three minutes for opening remarks, and then the City Council will ask you questions, and then at the end, you'll have three minutes for closing remarks. I will be running the timer, so you'll be able to see it there, but you may start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to tell you how deeply honored I am to be considered for the council position representing District 1. With over thirty years of dedicated public service in law enforcement, public administration, and emergency management, I have cultivated a deep understanding of the challenges and opportunities that shape our city. As a retired chief of police for the city of Colton and a former interim city manager, I've had the privilege of leading through complex situations, from policy development to community engagement, always prioritizing public safety and fiscal responsibility. My ability to navigate tough decisions such as addressing budget constraints while maintaining vital services has been the hallmark of my leadership in my history. In addition to my municipal experience, I've embraced the role as educator, as lecturer, and adjunct professor in the Department of Public Administration, California State University San Bernardino. I teach graduate courses on administrative leadership, emergency management, and public organization management, which allows me to share practical insights while preparing the next generation of public service leaders. Community service is at the heart of what drives me. As an elected member of the Ucaipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District Board, I've worked hard to enhance education and ensure our families have a voice in decision-making. My lifelong commitment to ethics, integrity, and service is the foundation of my approach to leadership. I'm excited about the opportunity to bring my expertise in public safety, strategic planning, and governance to the City Council. I'm committed to advancing policies that foster economic growth, strengthen community connections, and enhance the quality of life for all residents of District 1 and the city. So, why am I applying? To rebuild trust with the community, I am seeking the appointment to the City Council because I believe in the power of service in the public to create meaningful change. With over three decades of public service in leadership roles, I have firsthand seen how trust between city leaders and community forms a foundation for progress. My why is simply, simple but yet profound, to rebuild and strengthen that trust. District 1 deserves a representative who not only understands the challenges the residents face, but also has the skills to address them effectively and transparently. From my time as chief of police and interim city manager and school board member, I've learned the importance of listening to diverse voices, making tough decisions rooting in fairness. I only have one sentence left. My goal is to ensure that every resident feels heard, valued, and empowered. By leveraging my expertise in public safety, governance, and education, I aim to build bridges, advance equitable policies, and create a shared vision for a vibrant future.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll go to questions from council, starting right to left. Councilmember Woolsey. Would you like to start with Councilman Thorpe first? All right. Councilman Thorpe, we'll let you lead off.
Good evening, Mr. Miller. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening.
There's been a lot of concern that I've heard from your district that wants to know why you would want to leave an elected position for an appointment position.
It's a great, great question. After much consideration, and I'll be honest with you, I had some calls from many dear friends that I respect, and saw that there had been obviously some tough feelings in that district when the recall occurred. They felt that the skillset I have of building bridges, working together, my experience my experience in public administration, of building teams, and my willingness to work with the community would help. Leaving the school district is gonna be very hard. I am very proud of the team that I work with. We work seamlessly together. We enjoy each other. If you've ever been to one of our meetings, you can tell we are extremely professional in what we do. When we come out, we come out together. We show up together at many things. We are a true panel that works together holistically. It's hard to leave them, but I think for the greater good, the skillset that I have, I can help District One in the city council.
Thank you. What would you say to the voters that voted to put you on the school board that now you're leaving from this, being considered to be leaving from that position to this one, when they voted to put you in that, that place initially?
Sure, fair question. I really appreciate the nearly two thousand votes I got in the area and the district. The districts are a little different between the school district and the, and voting District One. I actually, Area Five in the school district. I appreciated their vote and their confidence, which shows I am electable. People did have confidence in me. By the many supporters I had across school boards, council members, law enforcement, even the teachers' union, I had plenty of support. Yes, would it look like I've left it early? I think most of my friends will tell you that know me, it's for a greater good to help the city. Because the school district is a part of the city. I think us working together, holistically, all of us working together makes the city a better place. I have the experience on the school board now. I can bring that to the city council. Yes, I feel a little remiss leaving because I enjoy being on the school board and folks voted for me to be on the school board. But this calling, I feel in my heart, is the right thing to do. But I understand the concerns clearly. I mean, I could see why people would say that.
I have one last question and I'll pass it to the next councilman. There's also concern that if you were to be appointed to this position, that you have a relative that happens to work for the city. Excellent employee, does a great job. We really like him. Concern about the optics of how that would look, about you being appointed to this position and that there may be some conflict of interest, the phrases, cronyism and nepotism, and things of that nature being thrown out there. How do you view those challenges and what do you say, what do you have to say for that?
Well, first of all, I'm very proud of Ryan Miller, the employee that works for the city. He's a wonderful employee from everything I've heard, every, even from on the dais when I ran into you guys at meetings, from the city staff, that Ryan does a great job. He is a great employee. I actually heard the same thing when I ran for school board, that, Bob, your wife's a principal. How could you be on the school board while your wife's a principal? My wife is an outstanding principal. She retired in June, but is well-known as a very well-respected principal. In two years on the board, we never had a conflict. If there was ever a conflict of some sort that even approached it, I would recuse myself. In business, in a, in a government setting, you recuse yourself. If there's any hint of a conflict, you recuse yourself. And basically, as my family knows, we stay in our lane. That's what we do. We know what our lane is and you stay in it. And I'm proud of my family. I'm proud of our public service. I'm proud of what we do. And Ryan's a great employee. I even, I'm sure there's some people here behind me of, know Ryan. He's very well-known. Every place I go in town, they tell me I'm Ryan's dad. So, I, they sure, I know how friendly he is. And they're the kind of people, we need the city. But if there was any kind of a personnel issue or something, I would recuse myself. But remember, he's an analyst. He works for a director who works for a city manager. The city council's job is policy direction. Operations is the city manager. That's who he works for.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Woolsey?
Well, with your opening remarks and your resume, there's really not much that I have to ask you. And you did bring up the fact about the support that you had when you ran for school, the unanimous support you had from the school board then, from the city council at that time, the professional people in town and that type of thing. So, I think you're very well, your credentials are really great. The one question I have, which is something I'm gonna ask each candidate, and I do have it written out, so I'm gonna read it here, but why do you think with almost a two-year campaign to run a recall and to have the recall fight not just in the North Bench, but all through the town, to monopolize the city council meetings for almost two years with their public comments, with their dissatisfaction of the city management, not with just Matt Garner, but with my colleagues who are sitting right here? How did we end up with only three people applying for this position? None of the real activists stepped up. It wouldn't have cost them anything to apply and come tell us why they should be on the council. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I can't speak for why somebody would apply or why they wouldn't. I think that, yes, there's a lot that's happened. I would enjoin that they could be involved somehow, even if they didn't apply, that somehow be on a committee or somehow, if there's people that still wanna be involved in another way, I would embrace that, I hope. Why people don't run, there's many reasons, you know? You know, it's really, when you're putting yourself out there, quite frankly, just the fact that I put myself out there for this, I'm asked already, you're leaving your school board. I've read the social media. I just don't comment on it. There's, there's plenty of things that I've read and I don't believe everything I read. But the people that know me know I'm of character and that I have integrity. But I've read some of it and some of the shots that I took on social media, they weren't fair or just, but that's part of the deal. If you put yourself out there, this is what happens. So, you have to keep your integrity. Don't react. Just understand you're a professional. And that's hard for people to do sometimes. Because as human beings, we wanna be liked, right? Well, sometimes if you get into the, these kind of positions, it's, it's hard sometimes because you hear negative things when somebody doesn't even know who you are. They've never seen you interact with your family. They've never even had a conversation with you. But they, you know, they're upset about something. So, I could see why people wouldn't wanna put in sometime. I don't know if that's why people didn't put in. I just didn't think at the end, we've gotta pull everybody together. Enough of the vitriol. You know, there's a way to do this and it starts tonight. No time to wait. We get moving right away.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton Venable?
So, voting for different projects that Ryan would have his hands in. Now, he would have to recuse himself for anything, you know? Because I know the freeway corridor specific plan, he's, you're super involved with it. And so, how does that work?
So, there's three main areas that would require a city council person to recuse themselves. That would be a ten ninety issue. That wouldn't be applicable when we're talking about planning actions because that's related to contracts. There's Political Reform Act, so that would be if there was a financial conflict of interest. And again, if appointed, Mister Miller would not have a financial conflict of interest in a project just because his son, as a city employee, worked on the project. In terms of, you know, a common law conflict of interest or concern about bias, staff works up the projects. They get proposed to the city council. Oftentimes, those come with a staff recommendation. Just because staff has recommended an item doesn't mean that there would be a bias. I think the only concern we'd wanna have, and I think the applicant addressed it, would be ensuring that we didn't have issues with ex parte communications where additional information outside of a public hearing was getting to, to the applicant through that process. But that, that concern frankly exists for any member of the council. That's why we have rules for disclosure regarding ex parte communications.
Okay. And then, how, how many voted for the recall?
It was three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven yes.
Mister Miller, out of that three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven votes to vote Matt out, have you reached out to them to, how much backing do you have by these, this, this group?
Well, I didn't go campaign. This is a selection by the city council. Yes, I did meet with some of their leaders and I had coffee in a living room with a couple of them. But I don't think it was appropriate to go out and campaign for this. This is an appointment with the city council. That is the ethical thing to do. I didn't have people write letters. I didn't have any of my fellow police chiefs or city managers send you guys emails. I didn't have any of my board write you guys because I felt the process needs to be pure. I don't mind meeting with them. In fact, I told some of the leaders, I think, of their group, if I was blessed enough to get appointed, I'll meet with them right away. I have no problem with doing that. But I thought it would be presumptuous of me to do that ahead of time. That wouldn't be appropriate. And that's the way I think is ethically you should handle things. If I say I'm gonna do something the right way, I'm gonna do it. And I've told, and I don't know if they'll tell you, yes, I had coffee in a living room with a couple of folks that I think are, you know, leaders of the organization. I had a very good, strong conversation with them. I thought it went very well. I was hoping that message might get carried to the rest of the group. If it did, great. If it didn't, if I get appointed, I'll be glad to meet with them, no problem. But I didn't wanna be presumptuous. It wouldn't be appropriate.
I just, I just felt that, you know, since you're representing their district, you know, to have them backing, you know, whoever they wanted to back.
Sure, I understand that. But again, my tactic basically was, it's an appointment by the council. If we were running for the position like a regular campaign, of course, I would've went and spoke to them.
But it's their district. That's what I'm, I'm just saying.
Sure.
It's their district. They want somebody to represent them. That's why I didn't know who was backing you out of that three.
Well, I would, Mister Venable, I would also say, Councilman, or Mayor Proton Venable, I also got nearly two thousand votes in the district last election. I'm the last elected one applying. I, I did get votes and I did have support.
Right.
I, I'm sure I could've generated that, but I, I'm just telling you, I felt the right strategy is, for me and you, was it your appointment?
Right.
It's not to go out and try to garner votes.
Thank you.
Question for the city attorney. It's been suggested in the community that a retired chief of police would need to recuse himself from contractual issues regarding public safety within the community. Is that accurate? I know that we do, I know Councilman Thorpe doesn't recuse himself from time to time. I know, I never have, I've never been erected to by you, but I'm just ensuring that the message is clear. Councilman Thorpe says for an entirely different reason, not just simply because he carries a gun for a living, correct?
Correct. So, like I was discussing in response to the Mayor Protem's question, there are three general areas when we're talking about conflicts of interest where the city council would have to recuse themselves. You know, when you're talking about Councilmember Thorpe, those relate to both Section ten ninety and also the Political Reform Act because as an employee of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, he has a financial interest in his income, which derives from that organization. There are specific rules for public employees. You know, you're not the first deputy sheriff to be on a city council. So, there, there are specific rules that are applicable to that. However, in, in the case of the applicant, the applicant is not an active employee of the sheriff's department. He would not have those same conflict issues. It would actually be very similar to your situation in, in that he's not an active employee of someone we're contracting with or, or having a financial arrangement with. So, there would be no reason under any of those three areas that he would have to recuse himself off of a law enforcement discussion.
Thank you, sir. Mister Miller? I would like to ask you a question specific to your time as an interim city manager and maybe specifically the chief of police position. As you know, the city of Yucipa found ourselves in a temporary reprieve from a financial crisis this year with the passing of Measure S. That does not mean by any stretch of the imagination that we are financially out of the woods, if you will. In your time as a city manager, interim city manager, as chief of police, have you ever had to implement serious budget cuts that crippled an organization? How did you find ways to overcome that? And what are your thoughts specifically on the Yucipa's financial problems? Because like I said, I don't, I don't, from my seat, I don't think we're out of the woods just yet.
Thank you, mayor. I learned a lot during the housing crisis. I happened to take over city manager when our city manager left while I was a chief during the, the financial crisis involving the housing crisis from, that began really in oh seven and oh eight and into oh nine, where we finally had to make the cuts. And we couldn't get in front of the snowball, cutting millions and millions of dollars, which resulted in layoffs. And even working with all the bargaining units, we had a full-service city, electric, water, everything, police and fire. Difficult decisions had to be made on restructuring the organization. I learned a lot doing that of what choices you have to make. We didn't have the luxury of going out to the community and asking for maybe some assistance because if, if you remember at that time, the economic forecasts were so dire that cities were losing money like crazy. So, I had to lead our team through that. So, I've lived it, which taught me a couple of things. Number one, you have to have a long-term plan for financial stability, no matter what. You have to have a strategic plan in place for reserves and human capital in the future, planning for something like that. And I can help with that because I've lived it. And it's hard because when, when people, you're making cuts and I'm thinking about somebody's mortgage payment they gotta make. But for the good of the city, you have to make tough decisions. And to right-size your organization sometimes, you've gotta make decisions that are gonna be hard to make, but in the future, it will provide stability to the organization if you follow the strategic plan that you put in place. That's what I learned from that. And, and I think that plan should clearly outline how the city will ensure financial stability and make decisions that protect future generations, preventing a repeat, repeat of the financial challenges that Yucipa faced today that they currently had went through. So, you have to keep it going. You have to plan for the event that something can happen. Now, we get economic forecast. We, we, we kinda know what our HDL report's gonna look like. We kinda know what sales tax revenue is gonna look like. But you never know what that, that unintended consequence is gonna be. And that's what your financial strategic plan needs to be. Just in case this happens, what do we do? So, I've lived that, mayor, from a standpoint. I'd be glad to work with anybody on that.
You familiar with the, familiar with the broken window theory?
Yes, I am.
Okay. As it relates to the city of Yucipa, we have done, I think, in the last, certainly the last four years, but I think even more in the last two years, we have reduced our homelessness by a landslide. Our crime related to homeless crime specifically has gone down. I'm receiving information from our business owners in the uptown that they find it easier to do business as a result of the blight being moved, moved on. How would you characterize the importance of public safety and the balancing of economic development to ensure that we can find those financial avenues to get ourselves out of the, the financial constraints we're currently in?
A great point. And the broken windows theory is still relevant today. I mean, if you think about, if you can't have, it's the little things in communities, if you don't keep them addressed, that dirty streets, crime-ridden communities, graffiti, homelessness, the things that can make a neighborhood look horrible. It in, what does it do? It entices more issues. That's the broken windows theories. It goes back to the seventies of broken windows on a car in the neighborhood. And what is the study behind that? Well, if you leave it like that, it's only gonna get worse, right? So, you have to address these quality of life things early to deal with crime later. But if you do that and you clean up them areas in the community with the help of the community, you can have a vibrant community that businesses wanna come to. They wanna open businesses in the community that are safe, clean, efficient, that are friendly. You can do it. But it, it goes with cleaning up the things that look quality of life challenged. And you have to do them things. Like the, the council's been very clear, that's one of their goals in twenty twenty-four and done a great job of doing that. I would continue that. And, and continuing that vein of, of taking care of them little things to make sure there's not a big thing later. Yes, you're gonna have crime. We can't stop all crime. But you sure as heck can handle quality of life issues upfront to mitigate issues that'll come up later in crime. But I think our sheriff's department does a good job. You know, where there's neighborhoods that are, I would say, substandard, you're gonna have parolees and drugs and issues. We all know that. If you've been in the business, you know, mayor, you're in it. You have to clean them neighborhoods up. And you have to do it multifaceted. And you have to do it multifaceted. Probation, patrol, narcotics, everybody has to work together to do it. And I, I, I know we do that. I know Captain Walker and his team does that. So yeah, I'm a big proponent of that, obviously, from being in the business. You know, there's something I, I had read that, I don't really want to reference it, but there would be three law enforcement people on the council if I, if I was appointed. Yes. Law enforcement people are great people. Law enforcement people are ethical, moral, and legal. Law enforcement people have seen a lot over life. So we make good decisions. We care about our community. So I'm proud to be a law enforcement person and I'm proud to do it. And if there happens to be three of us with that background, I think that's a good thing. I always support that. I just want to say that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You have three minutes for closing remarks.
One of the questions that was posed to us, and I think it's on the, the website, is look at 10 years into the future and describe what you would want the city to look like and why. I thought that was a great question. Because what is that vision? Because everything we do has to be about that North Star. What's the vision of the city look like in the future? What does it look like so we can all get around it? At the school district, we talk about make a difference. Make a difference in each child's life. And we all know what that means. We talk about it all the time. Every employee knows what make a difference means. But I thought that over the next decade, why can't we have a city government that valued and prioritized the unique character of our community, keeping it central to all future developments? I envision a city that's both efficient and safe. It's well-managed government focused on long-term financial and development strategies. The city would excel in developing high-quality services and resources, and residents and business owners alike would flourish. It would be welcoming to tourists, feature clean parks and beautiful landscapes, and offer an excellent athletic opportunity for Ucaipa youth. We love athletics in Ucaipa. Ucaipa would stand out as a model of consistency in community relations. We will get along with our community. We can do it. We can make it happen. You just got to start doing it tonight. The vision emphasizes preserving what makes the community special, ensures that growth and development is meaningful and beneficial. An efficient and safe and well-managed city contributes to the quality of life for all our residents and fosters a strong economic environment for businesses to thrive. By providing quality services and maintaining attractive, clean spaces, the city can become both appealing to residents and visitors. Ultimately, prioritizing community relations and consistent standard builds trust and pride in your community, making a city desirable to live, work, play, and to raise our family. That's the vision of our community. But it really starts with relationship building tonight. That's what we need to do. We, we've had a lot happen in the last couple of years, and I think we can start tonight fixing that. All of us together as a team. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Hanson Wong.
Point of clarification, ma'am. Are the other applicants listening in on this interviews?
No, Mayor, thank you for asking. So all of the applicants are currently in Conference Room A with a staff member. Our deputy city clerk, Kim, is in there with them. We have collected all of their cell phones, smartwatches. We've asked them not to have any tablets or communication devices, specifically because we don't want them to have an advantage in listening in on the questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome, Dr. Wong.
Thank you. She asked to drain my brain, but I wouldn't let her.
Just a reminder, sir, you have three minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So normally, I don't read off a thing because I, but I was told that I had to be polite to you guys tonight, so. Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for allowing me to be here as an applicant for District One City Council position. I have been in Ucaipa for over 24 years and enjoyed the view, enjoyed the recreational activities, enjoyed the community that it offered myself and the family. My son and his family also lives in Ucaipa. As a matter of fact, I think he lives in District One, so that I'll get to harass him a lot if I make it. I work for a large medical group. Currently, I assist with contracting, government relations, and marketing. I'm also the special assistant to the area medical director. I have been an associate professor of surgery at Loma Linda for medical students and surgical residents for over 20 years. So I've learned how to deal with youthful enthusiasm as they come through and want to learn and do what they do, although some of them don't care for surgery. And I have expressed my views and concerns here frequently for the last two years, in case you haven't heard me in the city council and other meetings. I've been active in healthy Ucaipa and supported the Youth Advisory Committee. I have attended over 90% of the city council and planning commission meetings. You might have thought it was 100%, but occasionally I didn't make it. I have read the agenda packets, discussed any issues I had with multiple areas. As they call it in Congress, I work on both sides of the aisle. I worked with developers. I've talked to the people at West Coast as well as Lafferty about some of the projects. I've, your city staff members will tell you how much of their time I use up. And I've discussed with community members in all of the districts and not just my own prior to my comments. I, I try and vet what I say as much as possible on a 30-second level. Okay. With my background, I feel like I could compliment all of you on your areas of expertise and experience with my area of expertise in medicine. I have discussed issues with the city manager monthly and issues with city staff as well as the city council. As stated in my application, I was on the Board of Directors for a large medical group on the Budget Advisory Committee for over $2.4 billion a year and committee to oversee physicians. Thank you for the time.
Dr. Wong, if you'd like to finish your sentence, you can go ahead. Just wrap it up, please.
I was on the committee to produce metrics on evaluating performance of physicians, including their ability to communicate and function. Been chief of surgery. Since COVID, I have worked on finding facilities and providers to make sure that our patients were served in a timely fashion. If you didn't notice, I have a sense of humor and I give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Councilman Thorpe?
Good evening, doctor.
Good evening.
First question I have, I think I've just got two or three. Why do you want to do this?
I want to do this because I feel that I have the ability to communicate both with the community as well as the city staff to try and make things run smoother and have people work together in a united way to aim for the same goal of having better city for our kids and grandkids and so on.
All right, so that kind of goes into my second question is, what is it you want to address beyond what you've already given? What, what do you want to try to address if you were appointed in these next two years?
Obviously, the elephant in the room is our budget. So I want to be able to see what I can do to address and help us get in line so that we don't continue having a structural defect. But in addition, I want to address the ability of our community members that don't seem to have the communication with our city and our city council and to see what I can do to hear what they have to say and how that we can help them improve in the city. I also want to try and, like you, I, I'm a rules person. I'm a law and order person. I, I like to follow the rules and I like to see the city follow the rules and have the type of city that, again, our families would like to have and what the city was known for and I hope will be known for.
Okay. I think that's all I've got for now. I might have another one in a minute, but that's all I've got for now.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you a member of the Save Ucaipa or the Ucaipa Preservation Society?
I talk to all groups. I talk to Save Ucaipa. I've talked to many different areas and many different groups. But yes, I talk to them and I work with them on different. I don't know if there's a membership, but I haven't signed any membership. But I do work with a lot of the members of that group, yes.
Okay. Are you aware that those groups have participated in bringing several lawsuits against the city?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you support those?
I support the reasons why they do lawsuits. I had wished that we could resolve some of the things without lawsuits, but I am not against the lawsuits, no.
Okay. You commented that you want to work together.
Yes.
But both you and your wife have spoken in opposition to nearly all the applications brought before the council and the planning commission, as well as calling for staff dismissals and the removal of the city manager virtually since the day he was brought on board. Do you still maintain those positions?
I don't know if I have said all of this stuff to you. When you say staff positions, I have said that in light of our budget, that bringing additional staff in and spending additional funding, I thought was not necessarily appropriate for what we have at this time. There are certain positions that I feel are needed, absolutely needed for our city. There are other positions that I feel in good times we should have, but in bad times, we should consider postponing until a later time. I have not spoken out against the city manager. In fact, I communicate with him a lot, try and work things out with him.
Okay. Can you tell me how you would propose to be able to participate in a closed session where discussion is regularly, where the lawsuits are regularly discussed?
Okay. Since my wife is a, since my wife is on the lawsuits, I would have to recuse myself from that. I don't feel it would be appropriate for me to participate in the lawsuits.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable?
Mr. Wong?
Yes, sir.
You're in a lot of the committees. I see you join me in the Youth Advisory Committee. I see you at the Trails and Open Spacing Committee. John Thorpe asked you why, and that's, that was one of my questions too. This, why the city council?
Why the city council?
Yeah.
Because I feel that I can try and help breach some of the mistrust. And I can help with my background. I can help with the budget. I can help with setting priorities. I don't feel that the city has necessarily set the priorities in a bad fiscal time.
So when I was running, I was trying to, to get our community like it was. So I was here since 1986 and our community was so tight. Everybody in, in every district, it was a tight community. And that's, that was my goal. And I see you out in each committee and stuff and the turkey trots and everything like that and stuff. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Miller. There's 3,527 votes against Matt Garner, are to recall him. How many do you feel that are backing you in, in this?
I have no idea how many are backing me, but I, I feel that, that I have done what it takes to gain the trust of not just District One, but of the community because I work towards what I consider for the betterment of the city as a whole.
You feel that you have the support from the north, from District One?
I feel like I have support from District One. I feel like I have support from the other districts as well because, again, a council member does not only work for their district, they work for the city.
Okay. That's all I have.
Good evening, doctor. Thank you for, for applying for this position and thank you for all the work you've done thus far in our community. I'm going to ask you some of the same questions I asked Mr. Miller. And then I do have a separate one that I think is more directed at you. If you're not familiar with it, I'm going to ask, I'll, I'll explain it. But are you familiar with the legal concept of the broken window theory?
No.
Okay. So the idea being that rundown community with broken windows or a, or a vehicle with a broken window attracts more crime by virtue of being an attractive, attractive to criminals, if you will. In the city of Ucaipa, over the last two years, we've done, I think, made some pretty substantial progress in cleaning up our uptown, working with our new solutions-oriented policing team to eliminate homeless criminality. As it relates to public safety, where do you see the distinguishing line between the importance of having strong public safety and then following with economic development? And do you think they correlate?
Well, I think it's absolutely correlated for several reasons. As a businessperson, I would want to make sure that my business is in an area that is safe. If you noted, in other cities, it's been to the place where their margins, as small as they are, are destroyed by the crime. Secondly, to have visitors and our residents enjoy and participate in our businesses, whether it's shops or restaurants and whatever, they would want a safe environment. Now, the homeless problem is a problem that's all over the United States. But I feel for a variety of reasons, we have done a good job with that and that numbers, even though they weren't high to begin with, are much lower. But more importantly is the way we do it. I feel like allowing them to have a way of getting the type of help they need rather than just throwing them out is a better way of doing things.
Thank you, sir. Your resume and your questions, answers to the applicant questions indicate that you have experience managing a $2.4 billion budget with thousands of employees. Obviously, the city of Ucaipa's budget is substantially smaller than that and funded almost exclusively by the taxpayers. In your experience, have you ever had to make decisions relative to cutting positions?
Absolutely.
Can you tell us about it?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell us about it?
Sure. As in with any other business, your amount of revenue goes up and down and your cost goes up and down. There are times when equipment and medications and other things just absolutely go out of bounds. So you have to decide what is most important, in my case, for the patients and also for the staff to get what they need in order to provide the services. So we've had to prioritize areas where we say, you know, we just can't do this now. It, it's a want, but not a need. Whereas in other areas, it's an absolute need or it would be disastrous for the patients as well as for our providers. So yes, in addition, if you're talking about cutting, I had to participate unfortunately in removing a physician for a variety of problems. So again, I've had to deal with, again, to make sure that certain rules are followed, certain ethical things are followed. And when it's not, we have to find an appropriate way of releasing people.
Do you feel that District One deserves a city council, an appointed councilman for the next two years who's able to help have a voice in resolving some of these lawsuits rather than somebody who has to recuse themselves from them?
I think that it is important for whoever gets in that position and the rest of the city council to work on. to work on alleviating some of the problems. Obviously, if I have some type of association with a particular problem, I should recuse myself so that I wouldn't be able to help, but I would be able to help with everything else as far as I'm concerned.
What I mean to say, sir, is your voice, you're an intelligent man, and you offer perspective to represent your district. And in some cases, relative to certain pending litigation, you would not be afforded the opportunity to represent the district in deciding some of these settlement discussions in closed session. Do you think that's a fair opportunity for the people who depend on your voice, or your voice in this case, to represent them?
That would be correct, but again, most of us, or some of us, would have certain associations that would cause us to recuse ourselves, whether it's where we live, proximity, people we know, and whatever. But in this case, I would not be able to represent them on the lawsuits that you're talking about. But I still feel like I would be able to represent the district and the city in an appropriate fashion for everything else.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Councilman Thorpe.
One more question for you, Doc, for me. There's no doubt that anyone that's seen you around knows that you do research. We all know that, because sometimes it involves any number of the people. It could be people here, people in the city. But sometimes there may have to be a decision or a vote that's made, that you've done all your research, and now there is a lot of political pressure on one side. How would you do in those situations where you've got facts in front of you? You have a pretty good idea what you think is right for the city, but then you also have people from your district. They've entrusted you in that position to represent them, but you're getting a lot of political pressure that may or may not be in the best interest for the city. How would you handle that?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to mention in the back that any political position or any administrative position in other areas, you're going to always have people that want you to do things in a certain way. And I'll get to the city in a minute, but in my position as the chief of surgical services, I had people that, you know, want this and want that and want the other thing. And what I tell people that I advise becoming administrators is that you want to be respected for what you do. You want to be able to communicate with people what you're doing and why you're doing it. But you're not there to be loved. For every person that loves you, ten will hate you. So you basically need to do what's right for the city, or right for the hospital, or right for wherever you are. And it's part of the job to take the fallout of not having people like what you do. On the other hand, if you clearly allow people to understand with transparency why you're doing certain, I mean, there's certain things that are obvious. I need to fix this pothole. I don't have to explain myself on that, okay? But there are other things that might be the lesser of two evils. Then you should explain yourself, because again, both are evil. You have to pick the right one. And you picked the one for the time that you have to pick it, and so that's what I would have to do. So I would vote in the best interest of the city and my district, and I would take the fallout, because that's part of the job.
Councilmember Woolsey.
You've mentioned several times about you wanting to help with the mistrust that seems to be out here. From several letters that I received from your supporters, they're concerned about restoring the confidence, the trust, and the professionalism in the city that's been lacking for a couple of years, in their opinion. Do you think that these people sitting up here next to me can't be trusted, are not credible? Justin Bieber just finished a race, a very tough race, and the voters seem to feel that he could be trusted. John Thorpe here didn't have an opponent, and I just got here. So who is it that your supporters or yourself don't feel can be trusted?
Well, I think what's important for the city council members is to actually communicate with the members in their district, as well as the members in the city, to find out what the distrust is about and work on the areas of distrust. Whether it's a distrust about how our budget is being handled, about whether there's a distrust about what we vote through as a city. I think it's important to find out, because you can say you distrust something, but what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything unless you know the facts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. You have three minutes for closing remarks.
So I feel like I'm an appropriate person for the job, because I feel like I could work with all of you. I feel like I could work with the city staff, and I feel like I have the ability to communicate with our community, District One and all the other districts, again, to find out what can help regain their trust in any of the areas and work on regaining that trust. And I think that if we, as a city council, regain the trust of the people we're working with, then we're able to achieve our goals without having obstacles and hindrances. So I think we need to work both on what the city needs, as well as letting the citizens know why we're doing what we're doing, and having them at least to agree that it's the best thing. And part of it is communication, and I feel I have that ability. Thank you so much for allowing me to apply.
Up next, we have Holly Warner. Welcome, Ms. Warner.
Hi.
You'll have three minutes for your opening statement.
Hi, my name's Holly Warner. Thank you so much, mayor and councilpeople, for this opportunity tonight. And I want to thank everybody who came. It's so great. This is a wonderful scene for Ucaipa. I'm glad that everybody cares so much about what goes on in this town. It's great to see all your faces, and I'm glad everyone's involved. So my background in Ucaipa, I love Ucaipa. I grew up here. I attended Calumayse Elementary School and Parkview Middle School and the old junior high. And then I graduated from YHS in 2001. My professional background is in environmental impact reports. That's what my degrees are in. I spent quite a bit of time writing cultural resources assessments for California Environmental Quality Act in EIRs. I have two kids in the school district. Hopefully, they're not watching tonight, because that would make me nervous. And one kid's at Zika and one kid's at the high school. I'm a proud parent, and I love the education that they're getting here in Ucaipa. I think that's one of the wonderful things about Ucaipa. It is a great place to raise a family, and I want that to be a continued goal and vision for Ucaipa. I think that this is a safe place to raise a family, and I think that it's a great education. And I also love our emphasis on outdoor recreation. There's so many opportunities to live a healthy lifestyle here in Ucaipa, and I think that that's wonderful, and I want to preserve that in the future. And I'm looking forward to sharing my vision, hopefully, for Ucaipa with you tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Thorpe, would you like to lead off?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Why do you want to be considered for this position? I understand you've got background here and you like the community, but is there any driving reason or desire that, why you want to be considered for that position?
There is, there is. I've been listening and watching a bit from the sidelines over the past couple of years, and I've seen the divisiveness in our community, and it kind of breaks my heart. I like our old, quiet Ucaipa, non-controversial Ucaipa, and I don't like seeing neighbor against neighbor. I want us all to come back together, and I think that we need to heal and restore trust and faith in government. And I think that that's a major priority that we should be considering tonight. I'd like us to kind of bury the hatchets and then come together and try to compromise and talk to each other again and figure out a way forward together, instead of divided.
All right, thank you. So from watching from the sidelines and listening and seeing the things that you have over the past couple of years, how would you address the mistrust that people are pointing out that they have with city council and the city? How would you address that?
Excellent question. I think that the transparency portal was definitely a step in the right direction, but I think we can do more. I think that one of the issues that people have been discussing is the issue, kind of, it isn't necessarily based on facts, but just sort of perceptions, you know? That I think that there's a perception that sometimes, perhaps in the past, that there were councilpeople who people in our community didn't trust, that maybe they might have been serving not for the good of Ucaipa, but maybe for their own interests. And so I think, or financial distrust or whatever. So what I would like to actually see added to that transparency portal, I would like to see campaign finances, like have it easier to track, that people can pull up, okay, who's actually donating to campaigns? I think that that would be helpful, to be able to look up each individual councilperson and campaigns. I actually do think some campaign finance reform might help restore some trust as well, that people aren't feeling like there's, you know, big money coming into Ucaipa from elsewhere that, and lots of money being spent on campaigns, that I think we lose some of our local control and trust in that. So I think that that would be, those would be two suggestions to help restore some trust.
And then the last question they have is kind of the same long lines as what I just asked one of the other candidates. How would you handle a decision that you have to make, once doing all your research, whether it's looking things up, talking to your constituents, talking to people in the know, figuring out all the facts? But then you're starting to get pressure from people, whether in your district or the city at large, and it may or may not be in the best interest for the city. So you've got all the facts in front of you. How do you handle that?
I think what a lot of people, people understand that we're not always going to agree. But I think everyone wants to feel like they're genuinely being listened to. And so I think that listening and responding and trying as best you can to explain the whys behind difficult decisions. I mean, there's going to be a difficult one coming up, I think, with some budget deficit issues, and not everyone's going to be happy, because, you know, sometimes to balance a budget, you might be looking at, you know, cutting jobs or reducing salaries, whatever else, that I think having to explain, but also just listen and to kind of make it, make people realize, no, we are listening. We're doing the best we can, and really encouraging people to get involved and come up here and feel like they're welcome to come up here and express their concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Are you a member of the Save Ucaipa group or the Ucaipa Preservation Society?
I am on a whole bunch of different groups online, like in Facebook, but I'm not actually like a member. Like, I haven't attended any meetings of any of them. I have, I actually, I'm in probably about 10 or track 10 different groups online, because I think it's important to know what people are thinking about our town. I actually have wider groups too. I'm in Redlands groups and Ucaipa groups. And I think it's good to keep an eye on what people are thinking about the city. It's a good place to get news and updates and to kind of get a more direct read on what constituents are thinking.
Tell us about your involvement and relationship with Vision Quest.
Oh, yes. It's a local art group. I'm a member of, I've been a member of Ucaipa Valley Art Association, as well as Vision Quest. I also teach at the Redlands Art Association. I've taught briefly at Vision Quest, and I display artwork there when it was open. They're closing down, as you know. That is, I think, a sad development. I think that, I think we, our community generally supports arts and music, and so I'm hoping that we can continue Vision Quest in the future.
So you do support the taxpayers continuing to foot the bills for Vision Quest?
I think that it's an issue that we should revisit once there's a new council, and I think we should get, have a meeting where people can provide their feedback about what kind of direction we want and whether that's an idea that people would support. I think we need to get some feedback from the public and see if that's a priority for the city, see what people say.
Okay. You also shared that you were interested in building a new high school.
Okay, yeah.
How do you think the city, how is that going? How can the city help you do that? Or how can you help?
So I'm a little bit of a nerd, as you might have guessed. I dig into environmental impact reports. And I was digging into the general plan update. And there was, so there's going to be 10,847 new residential units as a result of the general plan update, which increases our population by about 30,000 estimated, and about 7,000 of those 30 will be children that'll be added to our school district. And the general plan identified they need for three new elementary schools, as well as one new high school. And so I think before we're, you know, before it's a problem, it's good to have a plan for how we're going to deal with this population growth. I know that there's been talk of like the junior high or Mesa View being adapted, but, you know, that obviously costs money too, and then you need a new middle school, for example, or continuing education. So I think that it should be a priority that we stay ahead of our growth in terms of schools, infrastructure, and everything, because that's a big population increase.
Of course, you do realize that the city doesn't build schools.
Correct, yes. But we do determine, for example, development impact fees, which can, and fees that then could be used to help the school district build what they are going to need to build.
Okay, and one last question. You've taken a position against the Wine Country specific plan in the press, and one of your letters of support states that you now support it, which is correct?
I didn't, there were aspects of the Wine Country plan that I didn't like, and I felt that we could have improved. And so I was listening to people, for example, talking about drunk driving. I thought that there were some solutions to that that could have been explored more in Wine Country. So I kind of had more specific issues, like with traffic and the drunk driving and whatnot. It's not that I don't like vineyards. It's not that I don't like Wine Country. So it's kind of a more of a nuanced opinion that I have about it. I think that we could do a little bit better and respond to what some of the community's concerns were a little bit more in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton Venable.
Mr. Warner, so I haven't, you said that you've grew up here and stuff, and I really haven't seen you too much in the town. This is the first time I kind of ran into you and
It's nice to meet you.
Very good to meet you too. Have you been to a council meeting before?
Many times, yes.
Have you?
I've spoken at a few, yeah.
Have you? Great. What about any of the committees that we have in the Health of Ucaipa and the turkey trots, the runs and everything?
I am very involved in the community, yeah.
Are you? That's great. So I'm going to ask you the same question. Is 3,527 voters have voted Matt Garner recall?
Right. 65%, yeah, of the voters.
How many, how many of them do you have backing you on any of this? Do you have anybody supporting you? I mean, I've seen some of the letters and stuff that you have.
Sure, yeah, there are, but I don't have a number for you. I do know a lot of people on North Bench, and I've tried to reach out to people on both sides, as you know, people who support Wine Country, people who didn't. I think that there's compromises that could be made. I think the important thing is to listen, and I think that that's what North Bench feels has been missing.
Yeah, they, I feel that they should have who they want representing them, you know? I mean, it's their district and stuff, you know, they have their votes and everything like that and stuff. So I think that's extremely important. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warner, welcome. Thank you for applying. You're quoted in your tenure plan for the city, as it was brought up already, relative to education and ensuring that there's adequate education for our children as the population grows. grows. You also say that we must continue to expand staffing for public safety as our population grows. I'm going to bounce around, then you go on to say, relative to the established goals for 2024, that Measure S helps address the city's goal for public safety and the budget deficit. My question to you is, there hasn't been a large development in the city that generates tax revenue, with the exception of the Ucaipa Point, which is currently still only probably about a quarter way, maybe a little more, a little more developed since Vons and McDonald's and Ross were, were built almost 20 years ago, and yet city services have grown. Our staffing has gone up, the price for public safety in the last four years has gone up $8 million by itself, and yet we have no revenue to, to keep up with that. So my question to you is, as you say, for public safety, we must continue to expand staffing, so adding more positions, which is more money, about $250,000 per law enforcement officer, and I wouldn't even wager to guess what it is for a fireman. How do you see getting past the short-term fix of Measure S to have a long-term financial fix for the city of Ucaipa?
Great question. So as you know, public safety is about 63% of the budget. That's more than a slice of the pie, that's most of the pie. And so when we're facing a budget deficit, by passing Measure S, now our hands are a little bit tied, because we just said, hey, we don't want to cut fire and police, that's what resoundingly people said, which now when you have a deficit, then you have to look at that smaller slice of the pie, that's because that's all that's left. You're talking, you know, infrastructure, City Hall, whatnot. And that's going to be difficult, I think, definitely in the short term. I think there might be some, some pain there. I think in the long term, I, I had an idea. I've heard that a lot of people are not happy about the warehouses down at Oakland Road. But I want to give you an example of a really good development. So go back 15 years to Orange Street off-ramp, off the 10 in Redlands, there were a few packing houses, old packing houses, brick ones, some of them had been adaptively used. And the city, rather than, you know, putting in a big box store or whatever, they said, okay, let's take what's here and let's honor that architecture and create the Packing House District. And there's a lot of retail, restaurants and whatnot there, and they did a great job with respecting it architecturally and putting in good landscaping, that now it's a, it's a draw. And I think that that's probably bringing in more revenue than if there had been a warehouse. I would love to see something like the Packing House District down where we're talking about at Oakland Road instead. And as a double advantage to that, you're providing more services to the community. I, I looked up on LoopNet a couple days ago, I was wondering, okay, if I was going to open a restaurant here, are there spaces available for lease? There weren't any. In fact, all I saw was five spaces for retail anywhere in the city. That's not enough, really, especially with a spanning population. So I'd like to see, yes, more revenue in the city, but I think we could do it in a different way that, that addresses multiple problems and what people are saying, to kind of honor the spirit of Ucaipa and draw more people in. I think the freeway is actually a big opportunity because of the proximity to the freeway that I think we'd be getting passed through traffic and bringing in revenue into Ucaipa.
Do you support the freeway corridor specific plan?
I definitely think we, I've dug into the environmental impact reports, I know that we need more freeway, on-ramps and off-ramps. It's already, the level of service ratings are low, and so we definitely need on-ramps and off-ramps. And so I think that we need to move forward definitely with parts of it, but maybe there's some fine tuning involved based on community input.
In your professional experience, have you ever faced, well, I'll expand, either professional or personal experience, have you ever faced a financial deficit where you had to make difficult decisions and make cuts to an organization potentially, or maybe even in your household?
I think it's important to live within one's means. And so, yeah, I drive a 2006 Honda Accord in order to live within my means, you know, and sometimes you can't be flashy, it's more important to have a balanced checkbook.
Okay. Are you familiar with the broken window theory as it relates to public safety?
Yes.
Can you tell me about it?
Well, if you have, if you allow small problems, you kind of invite more. And I think that the city, that's one great thing, we've been addressing homelessness, which also helps address, you know, drugs and crime, unfortunately. And I think that, yeah, you've got to avoid the slippery slope and stay on top of it. And I think that that's why Ucaipa is a draw the way it is for a lot of families, is because it's, it's safe here.
Pretty sure you answered my question already in that response, but I'm going to ask anyways, do you see a correlation between public safety and a direct correlation to economic development?
Sorry?
Economic development as it relates to public safety, do you see them correlating?
Well, let's go back to when we had a bunch of riots in LA, downtown LA. What the businesses do, they left because it wasn't safe, and people don't want to work in a place that's not safe. And I think that a lot of businesses, you know, you don't want to start a business someplace that isn't safe. So, yeah, there's definitely a connection between the two.
I'm going to ask you one last question, and it's because you, you reference it a few times in your application. You said the biggest challenge facing Ucaipa is rebuilding public trust. You said that, forgive me, you, you referenced it a few times in your, in your application, but you say that the transparency portal on there, it was a step in the right direction, but more is needed. Can you, can you highlight what more you're thinking of and what, how you would find a way to rebuild public trust?
Um, yeah, that was, yeah, towards the beginning. I think that more information in the portal about city council people and where they're getting their money from, especially for campaigns and whatnot, I think that would be helpful to add to there, so people can pull it up and go, okay, this person's not being bought out, you know, that they really truly represent Ucaipa. I think that would help the trust.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Madam State Clerk?
Thank you, Ms. Warner. You have three minutes for closing remarks.
Well, I just want to thank everyone again for showing up tonight for Ucaipa. This is awesome to see all of you here. I know we all have a bunch of different opinions, and that's great. I think that having differences of opinion end up with a better result in the end. I saw when Chapman Heights was going in, a lot of us were upset about losing Orange Groves. And so people got in here and were arguing, well, hey, we need a really good development if we're going to be getting rid of something that we love. And so look at Chapman Heights today, there's these great green belts and places that you can walk, not right on the street, there's parks involved. Had a really good design because of so much feedback from the community, so I think that's something we always have to remember, even when we disagree with somebody. I think the solution ends up being better because of those disagreements along the way, and I think that that would behoove Ucaipa in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the interview portion. We're going to go ahead and move on to public comment, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right, I have a stack here of public comment cards that didn't specifically say whether they're for this item, for the vacancy, or if it's general public comment. So I'm going to go down that list really quick. If you are in the audience, if you can please let me know if you're speaking on this item or if it's general public comment, and then we'll move on. Terry Boone?
Hi.
Lloyd Reckstedt?
This item.
Thank you. Tricia Reckstedt?
This item.
Thank you. Is it David Geron?
General.
General public comment, thank you. Callie Binks?
This item.
Thank you. Robert Rensler?
This item.
This item, thank you. And Richard Hernandez?
General.
General public comment, thank you. Okay, all right, so we have about 15 or so public comment cards. So we'll start with William Bedford, followed by Linda Bedford.
Ellen, are there some names in there that you know want to talk about this?
Yes.
We didn't put that on our list.
Uh, yes, a lot of the other ones did say District One on there, so I assumed it's for the, for this portion. Thank you, sir. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. You may start.
Yes, my name is William Bedford, and I live in District One. And right out of high school in 1976, I spent four years in the United States Marine Corps, and I retired from the city of Riverside after 30 years of service, working my way all up into management. I've dealt with a lot of people, a lot of different subjects. I've noticed that there's a good way to handle things and there's not such a good way to handle things. And I think, obviously for me, in my experience, what I've been noticing is I just haven't felt that I've been being truth, being told the truth here about certain items. Now, I don't want to go into that. But anyway, altogether, it was 34 years of public service. There was, there was, and throughout that service, there were many times when I had to do presentations in front of council or Public Utilities Board and, and the like. So I've got, I've had that experience too, getting to know basically how to handle people and what, and how to, how to do all that. But I just, well, let me, let me add this, because as long as we're talking about that elephant in the room about the budget, right about the early part of 2012, management was, was told to report to the council chambers in the city of Riverside. And to help our budget, we had, we had to give up benefits. Now, for me, that was only $250 a month, but to others, it was much more than that. I haven't heard that as an option here. As a matter of fact, when that, that site went out where you can go in and you can pick, and I'm looking through all the options, go, where's that one at? Because it's something that you can look at. But anyway, working with all these different kinds of people and going through all these different personalities and, and whatnot, I just want to say it, I, I think, and also meeting with Dr. Hanson Wong and, and his quiet approach, his calm manner, those are some of the stuff that I noticed worked best for me. And I just think that he'll be a, he'll be an asset for District One to finish out Matt Garner's term. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Bedford, followed by Stephanie Harlan.
Hi, I'm Linda Bedford, and I live in District One. Good evening, council members and mayor. Tonight's decision on whom will fill District One's council seat is probably one of the most important choices you will make as a city council. Ucaipa has been divided for too long, and healing needs to take place so that every citizen feels like they have a voice and are heard and valued, so we can work together to become the place of beauty and peacefulness that outsiders think we are. I've looked at the applications of the folks who applied for this position. I do not personally know Bob Miller, so I cannot speak to his integrity or whether he would be able to put the city of Ucaipa before his relationships with city staff. I also do not know Holly Warner, but I believe her professional background and residency in the North Bench is a plus, and I liked what she said here tonight. She's quick on her feet and super intelligent. That being said, I think the best candidate for bringing healing to Ucaipa is Dr. Hanson Wong. Dr. Wong attends almost every city council meeting. He's familiar with and delves into topics that concern the entire city and not just the North Bench. Dr. Wong is a veteran and served in the Seventh Cavalry. He is a calm, thoughtful and humble man. He brings diversity, intelligence and vast experience from his medical background, serving patients and working in management. Dr. Wong is a problem solver, someone sorely needed as the city wrangles with the budget deficit issues. He has served on Healthy Ucaipa Committee and has been a liaison for other city groups. The people who live in Ucaipa are saddened by and have been grieving the direction the city has gone to as of late. Dr. Wong, as city council member of District One, will help facilitate the healing of our beloved town. Please choose Dr. Hanson Wong to complete the two years left on Mr. Gardner's term. And one more thing, as you make this decision, remember that you work for the citizens of Ucaipa. Thank you so much.
Stephanie Harlan, followed by Kathy Sellers.
I am Stephanie Harlan, and I live in District One. I'm here to urge you to appoint Dr. Hanson Wong to fill the council vacancy. We are so fortunate that he is willing to serve. He is unfailingly respectful and polite in his interactions with people in all walks of life and under all circumstances. In his career as a pediatric surgeon, he developed exceptional people skills, having daily dealt with families in the most difficult and heartrending of circumstances. We can count on him to really listen to and consider the concerns of Ucaipa residents, business owners and others with matters before the council. He has already been listening. He has attended almost every council meeting for over two years, frequently addressing the council on items of concern, and he prepares for the meetings as if he is a council member, reading through the agendas and all supporting materials, often 50 to 75 pages or more. Dr. Wong has extensive administration and managerial experience in a very large medical group. As chief of surgery, he ran the department managing training and evaluating the performance of physicians, including their ability to communicate with patients and function effectively. He was a member of the medical group's Budget Advisory Committee, which oversaw $2.4 billion per year. He has 20 years of experience working on the medical group's government relations, marketing and contracting. In contracting negotiations, he is involved to this day. He is expert at honing in on critical issues, ferreting out the various parties' goals and sticking points, and ultimately bringing the parties to a meeting of the minds. My husband is a longtime physician colleague of Dr. Wong's. They were in different clinical departments but have worked and still work extensively with each other on administrative matters and contracting. My husband tells me that when Dr. Wong takes on an issue, he gets right to the heart of the matter, wasting no one's time, and with a focus on what's best for everyone involved. No ego, no grandstanding. He's a get-it-done guy. If he has no direct experience with a matter, he figures out, he figures things out. Dr. Wong is deeply respected by his colleagues and noted for his down-to-earth, humble demeanor. It will be truly a missed opportunity if the city council fails to appoint a man of such outstanding character, intelligence, broad experience and civility to fill the council vacancy. It serves our city well if the members of the city council each bring different competencies and career experience to the council. We have law enforcement well represented in two council members. We have a member who understands mobile park issues and senior citizen interests, and we have a member in civil engineering and construction. Dr. Wong will not be duplicating any career experience already represented on the council. He will contribute a valuable perspective and will be exceptionally effective in serving our community. Thank you.
Kathy Sellers, followed by George Sardison.
Kathy Sellers, District One. We would like to thank the three exceptional people who have stepped up and applied to serve the remaining two years of the District One City Council position. You all deserve our appreciation and, and respect. You each have great credentials, and in a perfect world, all three would be appointed. District One will be represented by whoever fills the seat. We encourage the other two to keep in mind that it will be open for election in two years, and we hope you will still be interested in serving. The four people being tasked with making the appointment tonight should keep in mind that 3,527 citizens made the choice to replace Matt Garner. Community input must guide this appointment as if we were having an election. The enormous amount of hard work that went into getting here, going door to door for months, fundraising, being subjected to personal attacks, dragged into court, testifying before the grand jury should not be in vain. What started as 100 concerned citizens has grown into thousands of engaged people who are now watching every move of our elected officials and the management of City Hall. We have learned through trial and error how to affect change. We have become educated and feel that local government works best when the community is involved. We know how to recall, how to referendum and initiative process works, how to collect signatures on petitions. We now have a database of thousands and can keep people informed. We have regular meetings involving citizens from all five districts who collaborate with each other on important issues. Each of the five council members are responsible to the citizens citywide, not just their district. Your decisions affect us all. Social media detractors who make statements that supporting people associated with Save Ucaipa is a hard no, need to realize that people are aware and engaged. We are united. The definition of a kingmaker is one having great influence over the choice of a candidate for political office, but who won't run himself. We are watchful and expect council members to be responsive and respectful of the needs of the people they serve, not special interests. The refusal to meet and collaborate with the citizens of District One was a great disappointment and the downfall of Mr. Garner. To answer Judy's comments, frankly, I'm disappointed that you made those statements and went on the attack. There were accusations that the recall was only about sour grapes, about Cheryl and Long losing the election, horrible personal attacks against several of us, and I received myself threatening anonymous text messages. We had many meetings about who should apply and why, and for several reasons, no one else came forward. else came forward after learning of who applied. Perhaps you should be more agreeable to meet with the District One residents and learn about our issues. Your time and commitment is greatly appreciated. It is often a thankless job, and you have been subjected to scrutiny and criticism. We look forward to putting this chapter behind us and working hard to support and respect what Eau Caipa is known for. Thank you.
George Sardison followed by Heather Dent.
George Sardison, 12451 Custer Street, Eau Caipa. To begin with, I would like to say that comments made by the newest council member at the very beginning about the people like myself monopolizing the council meetings since that dark night and January 9th is totally unfair and unacceptable. I hope that's not a norm of things to come from that seat. It greatly concerns me that we could have three persons on the council with the same occupational background, whether it's current or previous experience. Eau Caipa deserves a diverse and well-rounded council in its makeup. I would guess that any law enforcement organization or league would agree that three out of five on any municipal board is not something that would be endorsed in the interest of fair play. While this appointment tonight is for council District One, it has implications for all the residents of Eau Caipa. We need a well-rounded council member that is keenly aware and knowledgeable of the ongoing issues facing the city, a person that has followed the actions of both the Planning Commission and the city council very closely for the last two years. This is Hanson Wang, as three of you council members can attest to. We need someone that has non-political management and budget experience, someone that has shown a special interest in planning issues from the far reaches of the North Bench to the freeway corridor, from Flag Hill Park to the county line, always with thoughtful and informed comments and suggestions. This is Hanson Wang. Of this, I'm sure that you three experienced council members can agree with me. While I reside in District Four for voting purposes, I'm first a city of Eau Caipa. I therefore ask you to appoint Hanson Wang as council member for District One. Thank you.
Heather Dent followed by Stephen West.
Hello, my name is Heather Dent, District One. Good evening. I wanted to say, I think we need more diversity on the council. We need someone that will be able to make painful cuts, a professional, someone that listens to their constituents. I very much care about police. I have nothing against police, but I'm not sure if three policemen on city council is a well-rounded bunch to make decisions for our city. If law enforcement issues brought up to city council, we may have to have three recruiting themselves, then we have two people to vote. That doesn't leave enough people for a vote. While I'm sure Bob Miller's a good guy, I don't personally know him. I feel like he's already in an elected position at the school board. I think it would be best to serve and finish at the school board. I just don't think the timing's good there. Hanson Wang is a very qualified for the position. Hanson is a doctor who has worked for the medical group Kaiser. He was on the Budget Advisory Committee, which oversaw $2.4 billion a year. He was in charge of evaluating physicians on their performances. He was the chief of service for surgery. He's currently a special assistant to the medical director. He served two years in the Army. He also gives back by holding a position on Healthy Eau Caipa Committee for the city of Eau Caipa. He is at every city council meeting. If I'm at home listening or here, he's always here, giving good, thoughtful advice. He's for open spaces, for preserving Eau Caipa. He needs to be elected to this position based on his involvement alone. I was very impressed by Holly Warner tonight. I don't know her very personally, but she's a local. She wants to preserve the rural atmosphere of the North Bench. She promotes locally-owned businesses over warehouses. She cares about preserving our open spaces. She has a small firm with her family. She has worked extensively on environmental impact reports. She cares for our little jewel of our town. She's been in Eau Caipa all her life. The recall proponents worked very hard on this recall. They deserve to have a hand in the hiring of the replacement, not only for District One, but the whole city will benefit from the right person picked for District One.
Stephen West followed by Bill Sellers.
Council members, I'm one of the products of Dr. Wang. I was a resident at Kaiser Permanente for my years through there and helped train me many, many years ago. So it was funny that I ended up living in Eau Caipa, been here about 20 years, and live off Norton. Every time I drive up, I drive up Carter Avenue, right in the heart of where they want to do the wine country and the planet up there. I love the rural atmosphere that we have in Eau Caipa. One of the reasons we moved up here to raise my family is one of those reasons that we have that rural atmosphere. I know Dr. Hanson Wang forever. He has not changed in thirty-five years, probably ten years I've known him. For a long time, for thirty-five years I've known Dr. Wang, he's been the same man. He's always been honest, straightforward. He does get to business. Every time I've, I've actually talked to him over the contract in some facilities that I work at, at Kaiser Permanente, and he gets to the point. He's great to work with. When we look at some places that get contracted, he gets the work done, comes back, reports back, and we get things done quickly. And it's been a pleasure working with Dr. Wang as a resident who trained me as well as he's operated on my family, and we trust him very, very well. I think it's great that he's always heavily involved. I agree with what's been said so far about District One. We need a person who understands those people in District One and the reasons why we went through this recall, and the reasons why we feel like we're being disenfranchised, and that we have our voice, we want to be heard. We think Dr. Wang can make our voice heard, at least the concerns that we have, and hopefully, as he moves forward, I know he will get back to us and explain those reasons and be more transparent. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Bill Sellers followed by Kevin Miskin.
Several hours ago, I went through another lengthy chemotherapy treatment that causes me to be a little unstable, on my feet, blurred vision, and watery eyes. However, I want to be here tonight to offer my full support to Dr. Hanson Wang. He is a man of high integrity and intelligence. As a pediatric surgeon, Dr. Wang saved untold number of infants' lives, including those in the mother's womb. Dr. Wang is 100% dedicated to the citizens of Eau Caipa and will make an excellent District One councilman. I trust you will feel the same. Ms. Woolsey, Save Eau Caipa and Eau Caipa Preservation Society are civic organizations. They are not, they are made up of concerned and enjoyed citizenships, citizens.
Kevin Miskin followed by Joanne Lissard.
Thank you, Kevin Miskin, District One. Congratulations to those who were recently elected. I think one of the primary issues that we really need to talk about tonight is healing. More than anything else, my wife and I, having moved here 25 years ago and been a part of this city, involved in Make a Difference Day side by side with Council Member Venable for the last two years, and being involved with our citizens here, we want it to go back the way it was, with friends and neighbors helping each other, sharing fruit, and, and being a part of each other's lives. I just saw Dr. Hanson Wang out in the foyer just now, and I asked him the question, what does it feel like to be probably the only living member to hear his own eulogy? And, and when we talk about healing, I think one of the important things that we need to recognize with all the qualifications that we've talked about this evening, is he has the ability to heal. Not only professionally, but he has the ability to heal, I think, civically as well here. I'm very impressed with all three of the candidates that have stood here before this diocese tonight. Holly, I don't know Holly, but very impressed with her. I have met with, with Bob Miller. I believe he's a man of integrity as well. And I hope that both of them will seek office in the future as well. But as far as these next two years are concerned and the need for healing in this city, I think we need to consider Dr. Hanson Wang. Thank you.
Joanne Lissard followed by Terry Boone.
My name is Joanne Lissard and I live in Redlands. But Redlands is increasingly affected by decisions, decisions of the Eau Caipa City Council. I'm here to support the appointment of Dr. Wang, Wang, for the Eau Caipa City Council. As a pediatric surgeon, he understands what it takes to bring healing and health to a child's body. It usually means, means a somewhat difficult process and procedure. Eau Caipa also needs a process and procedure to bring integrity to the city government that will also bring healing. Part of the difficulty is arriving at the truth of a situation and doing what is necessary to correct it. I hope that you will make a decision tonight that will be the best for all the people of the city of Eau Caipa and also Redlands. Thank you.
Terry Boone followed by Lloyd Rexted.
Two years ago, I asked the members of the city council to come down from the dais and stand with the people and join the citizens of Eau Caipa to show their commitment to "we, the people." No one did. The following two years brought mayhem to the city due to the vacuum of leadership. The actions of the city council brought destruction to all districts. Wine country-specific plan overriding one-acre parcels, three-story apartment complexes, two- to three-times density on developments above the general plan, increased sales tax, increased garbage rates, unlimited election donations. And I'd really love to see what the city manager is doing, because in my opinion, personally, we have natural flora growing into the street on Eau Caipa Ridge. All of the neighbors have called the fire weed abatement, and it has been months and nothing has been done on our street. It's easy to target your enemies with code enforcement, but not to take care of the things that really need to be done. Also, I did adopt a dog, went to the city, tried to get a license that you no longer do here, and I had to drive to San Bernardino to get it. What are we doing here? You need to take action today as part of a plan to right this ship and choose an excellent candidate. The people have spoken, and Dr. Hanson Wang is the one that we want to represent District One. The direction of the city needs to go toward hope and enthusiasm for quality and away from fear tactics. Hanson is a brave soul, and he will help steer that path.
Lloyd Rexted followed by Tricia Rexted.
I want to speak to you tonight in regards to your selection of Dr. Hanson Wang for filling the vacant council seat. Dr. Wang is eminently qualified for this position, given his professional training and experience as a pediatric surgeon. The level of training and wisdom required to fulfill this responsibility more than adequately equips him to be well-prepared to handle the issues that come before our council. He is sophisticated, intelligent, and he is one who can cut through sometimes superfluous discussion and clearly discern the root issue of any consideration. Within his medical realm, his administrative and consultative experience has put him in positions to oversee, as you've already heard, many of these things, serving on advisory boards, staffing situations, and responsible for oversight and accountability of budgets in excess of $2 billion. And most importantly, dealing with patients facing life-threatening experiences. He has more than proven his worth in these areas. His interpersonal skills of understanding and empathy are unmatched. We've all seen Dr. Wang's deep involvement in the current issues surrounding our city government. He routinely addresses issues of civic interest in a thoughtful and a respectful manner. He always comes to meetings well-read, presenting challenging options, and I have carefully observed that the three returning council members and the city staff have always given Dr. Wang their undivided attention and often nodded understandingly, indicating a degree of validation to his statements. You always, you already listen to him and affirm his ideas. You may not agree with him, but you acknowledge his statements and that they deserve consideration. It cannot be disputed that the dark cloud that the city staff and some members of the council have created has to do with trust, credibility, and confidence in decision-making. Dr. Wang comes to this council with no potentially compromising relationships, specifically within staffing at City Hall. He's totally free of any potentially vulnerable compromising pressures that could exist if he had family members in city staff positions. This council must do everything in its power to avoid any appearance of impropriety in this regard. Every decision of this council is under intense scrutiny by the entire city of Eau Caipa, and this is a great opportunity for you as a council to select Dr. Wang to serve on this council and restore light, trust, transparency, confidence, and community support to the deliberations and decisions of this body.
Tricia Rexted followed by Kelly Binks.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Beaver. My name is Tricia Rexted, Fremont Court, Eau Caipa. Thank you for this opportunity to address you all tonight. I'm speaking tonight to express my support for Dr. Hanson Wang to be appointed as the new city council member to replace, recalled Matt Garner. Over the course of the past two years, I have attended many city council meetings. During those many meetings, I have had the opportunity to meet, observe, and listen to Dr. Hanson Wang. It is my observation that Dr. Wang is thoughtful in his comments, extremely controlled in his presentations, very knowledgeable on agenda items, and at times has a very lighthearted way of presenting his opinions. I've watched you all give your undivided attention and respect when he speaks. When addressing the council members, he offers concrete solutions to issues presented to the council. Hanson has repeatedly shown everyone his sense of commitment to this city and the council members by being present in the chamber for council meetings. The effort he displays by being in person at the meetings communicates so much to the citizens of Eau Caipa and the council. It shows his dedication, love for this city, and the willingness to make the effort to be personally involved. I am asking you to please appoint Dr. Hanson Wang to fill the vacancy. Thank you.
Kelly Binks followed by Robert Rensler.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Kelly Binks, and I am a resident of Eau Caipa, and I am also blessed to be able to serve as the superintendent of schools for the Eau Caipa-Callamasa Joint Unified School District. And just standing with me are board members Kathy Coat and board member Debbie Miller, not related to Bob Miller. I just want to start by saying that I so appreciate the collaboration that I'm able to have with your team. We work hard to serve our kids as, as your team works hard to serve the city. We all go through different things together, but I just want to say thank you for me and Jennifer and Megan and the team, because it's always a bright spot when we get to collaborate and do good things. At YC JUSD, we have a wonderful board. We model teamwork, we model collaboration, we have fun together for the benefit of our students and our employees, and of course, our families as well. We serve both Eau Caipa and Callamasa, and we try to do that in a way that we bring a benefit to both communities as well as in education. a benefit to both communities as well as in education. Board Member Bob Miller, he has come on the board after serving many, many years in city municipality work. And so my first, my first thought was, I'm going to have my work cut out for me to re-school into education. But I want to tell you that Bob Miller put in the time and the effort to understand the difference between the way a city operates and a district operates. So I know that he is committed to learning first and then making decisions once he's garnered all the information that he needs. He has been eager to serve. He's attended football games and band concerts and parent meetings and all of those things that demonstrate his ability to collaborate within the community. I really appreciate my board. I really do. They are wonderful people, and I know that, that this decision you have before you tonight is a very, very difficult one. In my tenure in Ucaipa-Callum Mesa Joint, I have done this twice, one due to a death and one due to someone moving. So I understand preparing the process, engaging the community, and providing this opportunity for everyone to speak. Bob Miller is a communicator, he's ethical, he's moral, he is a leader, he's a person of integrity, and he's immersed himself in his role with us. We stand here in support of that because even though it would be a great loss for us, I know that if he were appointed for us as citizens of this community, he would do an amazing job. Thank you.
Robert Rensler, followed by Ray Snodgrass.
Robert Rensler, and I'm a resident of District One. I'm speaking in support of Hanson Wong to fill the vacant council seat for District One. I've known Hanson since 1966. We met as freshman classmates at Loma Linda University School of Medicine. We practiced in the same geographic area and remain friends, although casual, to this day. His many years of practice at a large medical group have demonstrated his intellect, his integrity, and his ability to work with people of diverse opinions and backgrounds. His more recent years of management responsibilities at Kaiser have given him valuable experience in administrative matters, budget management, personnel management, and government relations. He's lived in Ucaipa's current District One for 24 years. He's attended virtually all of the city council and planning commission meetings the past few years, so he's very well-versed in our city's current issues, challenges, and options. I can assure you that Hanson will listen to the residents of this city and his district, and he will be impartial in his decision-making. His only agenda is to promote the long-term well-being and success of this semi-rural city and its residents. He does not seek personal benefit. For all these reasons, I support Hanson Wong to fill the District One empty seat. Thank you.
Ray Snodgrass, followed by Martha Glubka.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, and congratulations to all the victors. And I would personally like to thank the past-serving council members who may not be listening, but thank you for your service. It's a tough job. It's hard to imagine now why anybody may want to volunteer to serve in the ring of fire, so to speak. However, I'm a North Bench resident, District One. Obviously, everybody that spoke tonight from different groups, don't, we all don't agree with each other, but it's okay to agree to disagree. I've reviewed the packages for the people requesting to be appointed. First off, I don't think there's an issue with three people on the council being from the same occupation. Mr. Miller's retired. We have law enforcement from different agencies, so the only point would be the contracting issue. And that, to me, is one that's easy for Mr. Thorpe to step away from. I'm supporting Mr. Miller based on the applications. I have met him many years ago. I've been in Ucaipa 40 years. I helped with incorporation. I ran the fire department paramedic program prior to us having funding. We lost the first election to get funding. We learned from that, and we gained funding in the second election. Never intended to be 100% funding. It was intended to augment the funding of the fire service. I was here whenever we shifted from County Service Area 38 to a direct contract with CAL FIRE. I'm retired from CAL FIRE, but that's the only tie I have. I believe Mr. Miller brings a wealth of experience, civic government. It's important for all of us to understand that gaining the knowledge in civics in running a city takes time. This is a two-year test, and I would hope that the city would learn from past mistakes. Members of the council, I urge you to appoint Mr. Miller. It's a two-year test, and thank you for the time.
The next speaker is Martha Glubka.
Hi, good evening, guys.
Call by James Glubka.
Good evening, and congratulations, councilman and city councilwoman. This is new for us, so I'd like to talk about the election tonight and how it will affect the entire city. I am not from the North Bench, as you know. John Thorpe is my councilman. But this does affect everybody in the city when you guys vote on stuff, so that's why I'm speaking tonight. I did this off the cuff because I was at my grandson's Christmas program tonight, so I had to write something very quickly. I reviewed all, all the candidates, and I saw that three of them were very, very good, all qualified. However, I had a few concerns. Bob Miller, I've heard of him, seen him, seen him over the years in the city and the things he's done. Holly Warner, I didn't know, but she's very qualified, too. Hanson Wong, I know well. I've known him for 35 years. My husband's known him for 40. They worked together in surgery. I have a concern with Bob Miller being on the school board. That's a four-year commitment, and I'm big on commitment, so I really think it's important to serve out your time when you're involved in something, serve out the four-year commitment. And I think that would be good and maybe run when we have an election again. And I think it would be wonderful if Hollywood, too. I am in favor of Hanson Wong. He is overqualified. He has been involved in so many capacities. He goes to every city council meeting. You're going to laugh at me, Justin. Every time he walks up here, he goes, "Okay, here's the nice one." Right? Yeah. And he's always very respectful. He's stable, he's fair, he's good-natured, he's smart, he listens. He meets with all of you guys all the time. And I've had the pleasure of meeting with Chris Mann and Hanson, and that meeting, I think, went really well, and I want to do that after the first of the year again. It's just good to get involved with the city, and you can thank him for meeting me two years ago. He talked me into it, and I know he talks a lot of people into coming here and getting involved with the city, which I think is fabulous. You know, people talked about him at the hospital. Well, he has, he did surgery on all of my kids, and me, one time. You guys know about my little boy. Well, when he relapsed, I had a gallbladder attack, and I said to Hanson, "Uh-uh, not doing it, not doing it. I'm not, uh-uh, can't." Next thing I know, he wheeled a bed into the pediatric ward, and he said, "You're gone at the same time." That's the man he is. He gets things done, doesn't take no for an answer, just like me.
James Glubka, followed by Brett Granland.
Good evening. I'm Jim Glubka. I live in Mesa Terrace Avenue, and it's up by the South Bench area of town. I wasn't expecting to talk tonight, so I'm just going to say a few things off the cuff here. My first concern is, we have four people replacing one person. I don't understand why there wasn't a vote for the North Bench people to vote in their replacement. That's, that's a comment I have to make. The other thing is, like you've been hearing, I worked at Kaiser since 1984, and when I came there, we call him Dr. Wong. There is no Hanson. He's a doctor, Dr. Wong. He was a pediatric surgeon, and I was with him hundreds and hundreds of times for surgeries on kids. And that doctor never made a mistake. Everything was perfect all the time, and the families all loved him, the staff all loved him, and to show his integrity, he is still working, trying to do a good job at maintaining medicine in this country. So I honestly 100% support Dr. Wong. Thank you.
Brett Granland, followed by Randalyn Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Brett Granland, 12618.
I apologize.
12618, Third Street. You guys got a little tough decision to make here today, and I just wanted to address a couple of things. There's a lot of talk about healing and mistrust and all that, and I'll tell you, it's very hard, and by the way, I didn't vote for it. I didn't like measures, and I don't like tax increases. And it's very tough to pass a tax increase. It's been tried in this town before and failed. And if there's so much distrust and so much healing that needs to be done, how did we get 58%, 59% on a tax increase to support the evil police? Because we don't want three of them on our council. I think that people said, "We like the police, we like public safety, we support it, we're willing to pay for it, and we trust the council." I don't think there's all this distrust that a relatively small group of people, the same ones, meeting after meeting after meeting, berate you guys, berate your staff. And as far as the 3,000 people that voted for the recall, 3,500, by my calculation, not a single one of them voted for any of the three that were up here tonight. We have no idea who they would or wouldn't have voted for. You got a handful of letters, and you're going to have 20, 20, 30 people, you know, speaking in favor. That's hardly a huge endorsement. There's fewer people going to speak for Hanson today than endorsed Bob Miller when he appeared on the ballot just two years ago. He finished very handily out in that same general area. He, you know, he lives right there in District One. He was handily elected. He's got a wonderful resume and wonderful experience. And the fact that he's a retired, was-police officer, worked his way through the ranks to do police chief, very experienced in governmental management, I think he's a pretty clear choice for you. He's a good man, he's got integrity, and I think you guys have all got integrity, too. And it's a little insulting to say, "We're worried about you having an extra one." You don't like cops, and yet, Justin, you won a race, it was highly contested, you didn't have a problem. Councilman Thorpe didn't even draw an opponent. He got 100% of the vote. I don't think that shows distrust, and we don't want police, former or current, on the council, no matter if there were five of them. Policeman's job is to protect and serve with honor and dignity, and I think Bob Miller and our other two officers here do exactly that. So keep that in mind, for what it's worth, and then do whatever you want. Because I don't live in the district, it's really none of my business who you appoint.
Thank you, sir. Randalyn Miller, followed by Dennis Miller.
This is my first time, so I'm really nervous. Randalyn Miller, District One. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come before you with great concern about the future direction of our city and the values that guide us as a community. I wanted to share my personal experience with you that I had with an organized group of people that I fear is attempting to influence the composition of this council. While I wholeheartedly support civic engagement and believe that every individual has the right to participate in our democratic process, I am deeply troubled by the manner in which this effort is being carried out and the potential implications for our community. Many people know this group by the name Save Ucaipa. My concerns are not about opposing any particular individual, but rather about the policies and priorities that may not reflect the needs and values of the broader community. This group is here, this group is here tonight in efforts to speak on behalf of the North Bench community and why they believe, and what they believe is best for us. I'm here tonight to let it be known that they, Save Ucaipa, does not speak for the majority of the North Bench community, and most specifically myself. I personally have been involved with this group, believing that their intentions were just that of they call, just that of what they call themselves, Save Ucaipa. After contacting a member in regards to obtaining a recall sign, I was invited to a meeting at the museum that I was under the impression was about the recall of Matt Garner. I soon realized that these meetings were actually about much more. While attending these secret meetings, I found myself witnessing behaviors that soon became unsettling. I quickly realized that I did not stand for everything they stood for. In fact, I did not stand for much at all. The amount of deceit, lies, and conspiracies that run wild at these meetings and in their secret app are almost laughable. I am confident that you will hear from many people of this group tonight in support of Dr. Wong and against any other candidate that did not pass their interview process. What is most concerning is the lack of transparency and divisive rhetoric that this group supports. They truly believe that if you are not with them, you're against them. This behavior tends to alienate most people, even if they are in support of their cause. The secret meetings, communication apps, the vetting of people before they are let in is what conspiracies do. If the truth is the truth, then just let it be the truth. I personally feel that the people of this city deserve to know the truth about this group before they, too, are deceived and end up in a lawsuit along with them. Just because a few people have a wish list for a city does not make it in the community's best interest. Our city thrives when diverse perspectives come together to solve problems. However, we must ensure that these perspectives are inclusive, truthful, and for the collective good rather than the narrow interest of one specific group claiming to represent the citizens of Ucaipa and the North Bench. I urge the city council and specifically the citizens of Ucaipa to remain vigilant, engaged, and informed with facts and not opinions.
Thank you. Dennis Miller.
Dennis Miller, live in District One, live at 35888 Oakland Road. I almost said Ucaipa Boulevard there. I've probably lived in over 50, 60 homes in this community in my 62 years of living in this community. In fact, I haven't heard anybody else that's lived here longer than that. I've heard Justin has family that's been here longer than that. I've seen this community change a lot, some of it good, some of it not so good. There's been a lot of divisiveness in the North Bench and throughout the community. I was not happy with Mr. Garner's positions that he took on some developments in the North Bench. I met with him, spoke with him, tried to convince him differently. He chose to ignore what I had to say or chose another path. That's why I supported the recall, and I supported the North Bench group, the Save Ucaipa group, to, for the recall, for that reason, because I felt that he wasn't really representing the people there. With doing that, okay, is, I voiced my opinion to a few people in that group. Soon as I started voicing my opinion, started to retract from me, didn't want to hear from me, didn't want my input. This was my wife that just spoke in front of you, in front of me here, and she, she was part of that group, and, and she participated in her heart for the community and felt that she was... and felt that she was shunned by what has taken place. And I'm embarrassed that this community has gotten to this point, that there's so much decisiveness in this community. I've lived here for 62 years, I've gone to school here, I've worked in this community, I've had a business in this community for 42 years. And I would ask that we all come together and we look for the common good in all of us and end all of this infighting. And I hope that you make the proper decision here tonight, whoever that may be, in this come together. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Well, I'll lead off. To the three applicants, I said it in every one of my questions to you, I'll say it again. Thank you for loving the community so much that you're willing to step into this role. It isn't easy, and it certainly wasn't what I thought it was four years ago when I decided to run. But I love Ucaipa, and it truly does deserve to be protected and to have reasonable voices. My opinion on the matter is, there is not a wrong answer tonight. All three of the applicants are, I mean, phenomenal. Dr. Wong and Bob Miller have earned my respect over the years. Ms. Warner, I've never met you before, but certainly tonight you took a step in the right direction of earning that respect. I think that you are level-headed and you want what's best for our hometown as well. You're a YHS alum, so we have that in common, which is great. You didn't say you're from Redlands, which is good. That would have been a step in the wrong direction. Those terriers. So, all three applicants, we would be lucky to have you serve on this council. So, I'm at least confident knowing that I don't think there's a wrong decision. I think either one, all three of you would be good. I do see a difference between a police officer and a chief of police. I'm not so bold as to say that I am as knowledgeable as my chief. In case you're listening, I'm certainly not chief. You learn a lot as a chief of police. You learn a lot as a department head that even a city councilman doesn't have experience with. More than that, I think Bob has an experience as a city manager, running a city, and having to interface with the city council. And I'm happy to say that every, all three of the applicants said that their priority is building trust with the community. That is a priority I share with them, I think it's important. That's why I helped start the Walk with the Mayor Series, to help answer questions and somebody said, "Explain the why." I hope that continues. So, thank you for everybody who spoke. That is my position on the matter. I think we'd be lucky to have any one of the three applicants. But before I solicit motions, I think if anybody else wants to have comments regarding that, then we'll move on to motions.
I would like to echo some of that as well. I think that all three are outstanding candidates for the position. I also think too that we have to consider that, had this been in an election, they would have all, that district would have been able to vote for who they want. So, we have to be mindful of that when we're picking, and we're not just picking what we personally want, but what is best for the community and best for that district.
Yeah, absolutely.
Since I'm new here now, can I make a motion now, or are you ready for that?
Well, if you have anything to add on the matter, and then we'll offer it up to Mayor Protim Venable, then we'll move on to motions after that.
Okay, go ahead.
You have any comments before we solicit motions?
No, I think that they're all fantastic. I mean, Bob Miller is an upstanding, he's a great guy. I've had a lot of conversations with him, and he's just excellent in everything that, you know, we've ever had any discussions with. Holly, I, you know, this is the first time that I met you and stuff, but I mean, I think that you're fantastic as well. You know, Hanson Wong, you know, I work with him on a weekly basis, you know, whether I'm meeting with him or he's at one of the committees that I'm going to and stuff. So, I mean, it's, there's three great choices.
Well, you ask first, and ladies first, I suppose is a good way to go. So, if you'd like to make a motion as your first motion as an elected councilwoman for the city of Ucaipa, we'll hear it now.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Bob Miller to fill the council seat in District Number 1.
So, we have a motion for Bob Miller to fill the vacant council seat in District Number 1. I will second that motion. And with the motion and a second, I will ask the city clerk, please initiate a roll call vote.
Councilmember Thorpe?
No.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Venable?
No.
Mayor Bieber?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Motion failed. Is there a second motion?
I would move to nominate Dr. Wong.
A motion made by Councilman Thorpe to nominate Dr. Wong?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Venable. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
No.
Mayor Protim Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Bieber?
No.
Motion failed.
Is there any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. I would ask that this item be brought back to the city council at the first meeting in January?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a recommendation? Since we've gone through this process, we've had a motion for one of the applicants that failed. We've had a second motion for an applicant that failed. It might be prudent to continue with this process this evening to see if a majority can be formed. Keep in mind that the council has 60 days to make this decision. Could come back at a future meeting, but typically you would see multiple attempts to reach a majority before we postpone this item and have to bring it back another time.
So, while I don't disagree that Dr. Wong would be a great leader for the city, I feel at this point, from my position, ma'am, sirs, we face a time that private sector experience would fall second to the experience offered up by a man who ran a department, ran a city during a time when the economy was so badly that I attended an academy, when the undersheriff at the time who was sitting in the audience interviewed me and only nine deputy sheriffs were in the academy. This man ran a department successfully, navigated the financial implications of a recession, and did so in a way that managed to get him to have the resume that we all saw today. My position on the matter is that this council is gonna be facing some very difficult decisions over the next two years. We are hardly out of the woods as it relates to our deficit. I think there's more work to be done in a responsible and prudent way to not just cut spending, while I think that's necessary, but to truly find revenue sources within the community in a way that can be palatable for all who live in this community, whether it be in Districts 1 or 5 or everything in between. This truly, I do not want this to turn into any negative talking about any of the applicants, because I certainly don't, it's not warranted nor I think there's any fodder for that. But my position on the matter is, I think we should lean on the experience of a municipal leader who has navigated these trying times similar to this while we try to find our way out of this financial disaster that we're still navigating.
Yes, I agree with the mayor. Bob Miller has the municipal experience, he has the time. Time's important, there are committees and things to attend that unfortunately these gentlemen work, and they can't do that. They're more, Bob would be more accessible to the city of Ucaipa. I think that his experience speaks for itself. He won an election already with a big majority of the people in his community, and I stand firm on my support for Bob Miller.
You know, one of the things is, is I got 600 phone calls, texts, emails on everybody backing Dr. Wong. And remember, you guys dictate to us what you guys want in your district. And if that's not the biggest dictation, I don't, I've never seen. It's, you know, constantly what you guys want in your district. And with everything that, with the emails and everything that I've gotten and stuff, I don't see how it couldn't be. If we went to an election right now, I think that out of the 3,527, I think that they would probably bring in at least 3,000 votes to support Mr. Wong, so.
No. At this point, that's inappropriate for an open forum in that regard. I didn't receive 600 emails, texts, or phone calls. In fact, I will recount them. I received...
While you count, let me make my statement real quick. I, like Mayor Protim, received multiple phone calls, multiple emails backing Dr. Wong. While I don't have anything against Bob Miller at all, matter of fact, we're personally friends. We meet and talk on a pretty regular basis. I think he would be phenomenal for it. However, I think there is an element that we have to listen to what the people in that district are wanting. And while, yes, it is maybe a small percentage that are here tonight, I think I didn't get, but maybe two correspondents for Bob. And I know them personally, and they said something to me, so they didn't have to send me anything. But as far as emails, text messages, or phone calls, I got nothing for him. I got nothing for Holly. I got a lot for Dr. Wong, and I said it earlier, there is no doubt in anybody's mind up here that Dr. Wong researches and prepares. And I say this lovingly, that Dr. Wong probably called me solid for two to three weeks on a particular matter, every single day.
That's true.
And I think I was talking to him more than I was my wife then, that month. But with that said, I think it shows that he has a level of involvement and he wants to make sure that he can restore some of that trust and communication with city and the constituents. And is a two-year term. My concern with him coming in is that he's gonna have to hit the ground running. And I know that I'm not necessarily always the fastest learner in the class. It took me a little bit to catch on to everything, but he's been in every one of the meetings for the past four years. And so, I think that he does bring some things to the table that Bob doesn't have. However, I think that both of them are very strong candidates. But if I'm listening to what I'm hearing from that community, and I've talked to people from my own district today on the phone, and they are backing the doctor. It's two years. So, for two years, we can give him the opportunity to see what he can do. I don't know if I'm talking out of turn for him, I don't think he said it tonight, but if my understanding is correct, he doesn't necessarily have a desire to run again after those two years. But that may change. Just because he's saying that now doesn't mean that circumstances don't change. But I think he does have a goal to see that there is a better rapport between the public and the city. And I think Bob has that same goal. But each one of us was elected by the people in our district, and we're making a decision for a district that they're not able to vote on. If there was going to be an election, the only way it could have happened would have been a mail-in ballot. They would not have been able to do in-person voting, and that would be in the spring. So, that then pushes everything back to November, which is a year long. It also would cost probably around $100,000. So, we're talking about money. So, I think if we're gonna make a decision, yes, for the greater good of the community as a whole, we do have to pay some heed to some of the opinions and voices that are coming out of that district, whether or not we agree with all of them or not, whether or not I would personally have voted that particular way or not. I think we have to listen to the feedback. And we've had an hour plus, whatever, a couple hours' worth of comment and interviews. That's my opinion, that's where I stand with it.
Yeah, and I did see you telling what I suspect were votes in favor of or not for an applicant. I will go back to a previous concern that I raised, to the good doctor, about leaving a district that several of the residents who are enthralled in litigation without a voice in closed session. Because of his ties to the groups that are suing the city, I think it would be a disservice to District 1 to rob them of a voice in closed session during potential litigation that could last two years. Sometimes civil litigation takes that long. I think Dr. Wong has a bright future on this council. I don't doubt what you say. I think he will find himself in his seat here eventually. I think at the moment, my position has remained unchanged. I think at the moment, considering the, considering where we're at as a community and seeing how Bob Miller interacts with the residents of District 1 as a neighbor to these folks who are, who feel, as it was said, disenfranchised. I know Dr. Boone ran against Mr. Miller in the school board race, and I know that they collaborate. She spoke about him prior. I think District 1, especially over the next two years, as this council is forced to consider litigation and really healing the community by way of closing out some of that and robbing that district of a voice in closed session to represent them is a disservice. And I think, I don't think by putting Bob Miller on this council is robbing them of a voice. In fact, I think that he will be a good steward and liaison between the residents of District 1, not just the North Bench, but the ones who live next to the Interstate 10 freeway, and give them a voice here in this, in this city council chambers. Ms. Sellers, we've been over this before. Speaking out of turn is inappropriate, ma'am, stop. Okay, it's inappropriate. This is council discussion, and you've made yourself known, we heard your comments. I know, I didn't interrupt you not once. And to your point, there will be an election in two years, and the city, the citizens... The citizens will have an opportunity to... Martha, please, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. You're being discourteous to me now. My position remains unchanged. So, if, maybe we can call for a second motion and do a roll call vote again?
Can I make another comment?
Ma'am.
Okay. I understand Dr. Wong's background. He's in the medical profession. I understand he's had the experience in management and the budgeting. However, Bob Miller has had the experience in the municipal arena. And I still stand firmly with Bob Miller.
Venable, you have anything, Dan?
No, I just, like I said, that we, you know, my district wanted me, and so they voted for me. And like I said, if it went to vote right now, I believe that Hanson Wong would be there because it would, you know, the District 1 spoke out. They spoke out tonight. They spoke out, you know, through my emails and texts and phone calls. And they deserve to have somebody represent that they want. So, I'm standing firm with Dr. Wong.
I still think that we need to listen to what the community is saying. And again, this isn't any dig against Bob, I'm good friends with him. Maybe not after this, he may have an issue with me, but I still think we're good friends. And I just, I think he could definitely bring some things to it. I've talked to several people in the North Bench, and I've told them my opinion. They listened, but then they came back about a week later, and that's probably why I have a lot of phone calls, text messages, and emails. Not one of them, other than the one or two people that I had already talked to prior to those conversations, were wanting to support him. And I have no doubt in his ability. I have no doubt what he'll bring to the, what he'll bring to the table. I was hoping that they would, they would see that, the experience and what he brings to it. I've had multiple interactions with him over the past two years. I'm not a chief of police, so I wasn't in the same arena as him. arena as, as him. But I have, and he's a professor. I'm not a professor. He's been an interim city manager. I've not been one. He is somebody that I use on a regular basis to bounce ideas off of and talk to and get input and, and ideas from because of his, his experience with leadership. I think he would really be good. But this is, is it what John wants? Or is it what these voices from this particular district want? I feel I would probably, if it was me personally voting, I would probably vote differently. But I do think we have a responsibility to listen to what the constituents are saying. And whether we agree with all of them or not, we've had some return folks that have been here for the past two-plus years. And we've had a lot of people that have not been here. And they're, whether they're independent, or they're doing it because they were asked to from this group, we've had a lot of, a lot of feedback from them. And I don't think we can ignore that. So it doesn't sound like to me that any one of us is willing to give on our position. So I, I don't know where we go from here. I, I know when the thought was of us voting to have an appointment tonight, the idea was to allow that, that district to have somebody in that position right away so they have representatives for some of these decisions that are gonna be coming up. A year's too long. Waiting till the spring, a couple of months, doesn't save us any money, but maybe that's the way we have to go. I don't know. I heard today through, through some folks that people felt by us doing the appointment tonight that we were, it was kind of, not conspiracy is the wrong word, but it was formatted or, or planned all ahead that we would do this so they wouldn't have a chance to vote for who they wanted. We were just gonna do our own thing anyway. So my concern as some of them and some of the applicants is to rebuild that trust and communication. By not listening, I don't think we're helping to correct that. Whether or not later on tonight the decision is made for me to be mayor or not be mayor, or whatever the case is, I'll tell you right now what my four points are that I was gonna talk about. Whether, no matter how this went, I have four things. And Bob knows this because I've talked to Bob about this. The very first thing, we have a saying on this wall, it says, "In God We Trust." I don't know if it's a slogan, it's just a cute saying, or do we really mean it? So if I were to become mayor, I wanna put our money where our mouth is. And I wanna start praying before each one of our, our meetings and setting the tone. And keeping it respectful and keeping it guided the way it should go. The second thing is that we would put back the mayor rotation back to a one-year thing. Because I think it's very important for each one of the districts have the opportunity for their representative to be the represent, representative for the city, the spokesperson. I think it's, I think it's important. Whether or not we think that person is necessarily the right person at the right time, I think that they owe that to the district. They need that opportunity. The third thing is obviously our financial aspect. Working on our finances, economic development. If we have to cut things here in the city, and we have to trim some fat, we have to do what we have to do. But I think there's a long-term goal we have to work on for finances. And then the fourth thing is exactly what everyone's been talking about tonight, working on the trust. It could be difficult. Depends on how difficult we make it on ourselves. But I think it can be done. Those are the four things. If given that opportunity, that is what I would like to see done. So I think this plays into one of my goals, and that is to try to work towards a resolution. And if we give them the opportunity to have somebody up here that they want up here, and if it completely, this is my terminology, if it blows up in their face, we can say, guess what? We gave you what you wanted. Now, Dr. Wong, I don't think is somebody that's gonna let things blow up in, in their face. But we can come back with good conscience and say, hey, we gave you what you guys asked for, what we were hearing. And now that we've gotten to two years, and now an election's come up, now they can decide. And if some of the same players that have applied tonight decide they wanna apply for that district, then it goes to vote. And they can, they can vote how they want to vote for their representative.
Where I, where I'm torn is, and it's something you actually said tonight, Councilman Thorpe, was how do you evaluate the facts and circumstances surrounding an issue, make the, knowing that where you, based on what you see, the direction is clear. However, maintaining that course in spite of political pressure. You asked that question of one of our applicants.
Mm-hmm.
You, you see the facts.
Two of them.
You see the facts as where you think is best because of everything you, from your thirty thousand foot level, everything you see, knowing where we're at, being privy to all the meetings that, well, everybody's privy to the public meetings. We know that very few people go. Someone's at your front door. So then we make a decision. We're, we're required, we're entrusted to make a decision based on the information that we are given, based on the closed session information that we're given, that we're entrusted with. Maintaining that, that, that heading in spite of political pressures, what you, that was your words. Now, you just said a moment ago that if it was your vote, based on everything you know, you would go a different way. And yet you're saying that the political pressure has influenced you, even though you challenged two of our applicants tonight with the same question. And I agree. I think, again, I'll, I'll say it again. I believe truly that if I had a, a crystal ball here in front of me, I would see Dr. Wong sitting at this dais. I believe it's gonna happen. But I believe, based on everything I see, based on the, based on the reports that are given to us by our Director of Finance, based on the litigation that we're presented with in closed session by our attorney, all the information from our city manager, our assistant city manager, our planning director, that Bob Miller is a person who can help lead us in the next two years, it's not a full term, to get us to the spot where then the District One voters can place their, their candidate in a position to lead them. I'm not ignoring the fact that they're, they're here tonight speaking. But if twenty-three people have spoken in favor of Dr. Wong, three thousand five hundred some odd didn't, I don't, I'm not certain that we're, we're ignoring their vote by considering all the facts and circumstances that are presented to us as elected officials. And I'm not saying that we should not, that we, certainly, the citizens run the community. Our org chart very, very clearly dictates that. We report to them. Okay? But we're also entrusted with information that either the people are not given because it's, it's law enforcement, or excuse me, it's attorney-client privilege type stuff, or people just don't, you know, some people, I, I can guarantee you, one of the questions that was asked is how come more people didn't apply? This tends to get in the way of your life. All right? Municipal government takes place at the, at the most inconvenient hours. Martha Globke was at somebody's, at her grandson's Christmas, your grandson's Christmas recital? Right? I'm sure she would have liked to have been here for the entirety. But maybe that's why she didn't apply to be here, because she has a life that she would like to live as well. So listen, I'm not trying to make an enemy out of the folks of District One. I'm not, I'm not submitting that the people who spoke here today are somehow less valid. What I'm saying is, based on everything, based on everything that I have, all the facts and circumstances that I've been presented with over the last four years of being your elected official, I submit that Bob Miller will help us, this council, rebuild public trust, navigate financial uncertainty, find creative, innovative ways to, to, to build revenue while cutting, while cutting services that he has experience doing. Cutting, cutting municipal service is not easy to do. You and I both know that collective bargaining units have their hand in that, in that process. So we start cutting people's jobs, that's not an easy decision to make. I submit Bob Miller is the one who can help us get there. We're talking six hundred and seven hundred some odd days of Bob Miller being on the city council should this vote go through. And then, in that time, perhaps he demonstrates the expertise necessary to gain the support of District One. Or perhaps he helps right the ship to the point where now we can hand that, that District One seat off to a man who doesn't have the municipal experience, and yet can bring some outside perspective from a Fortune 200 medical corporation to this board and help us make more prudent decisions. I submit.
City manager, what else do we have on the board that we can consider? Because I'm not sure that we're going to resolve this, at least not in a timely fashion.
I think one thing to consider is that the council can continue this item to a date certain. The item's been heard. We wouldn't have to go through the whole process again. You could continue to, to think on it and come back. Keep in mind, until an appointment is made, or if no appointment is made within sixty days, it triggers a special election in November. Between now, the time that appointment is made, or now until November, if that's the way it goes, this council will be operating with four members, which makes operating difficult because any given vote can easily be a stalemate, deadlock, two-two, which is what's happening right now.
So I don't think waiting till November is in the best interest of our community or for District One. What does it take to do the, I know it may not be the particular type of election that they would like to see, but for a mail-in election, what does that look like? What does it take for us to get that ball rolling if we can't come to some sort of a, should I say compromise or agreement of some kind? What does it take to get that ball rolling, to put this to a mail-in ballot election? Obviously, roughly a hundred thousand dollars. But outside of that, what else?
Right. And I'll defer to the city attorney on the specifics of, of what needs to happen to be, to trigger that. I would like to comment, though, that keep in mind what you're, what you're talking about is an election with no physical polling places in the city. So that would be a mail-in only situation. I think that's a tough sell in a community where a large percentage of the residents have expressed distrust of voting by mail. City has received many, many, many comments over the election cycle, people who wanted to walk a ballot into a polling place or, or to a box at City Hall, because they do not want to place their ballot in, in the mail. So with that, I'll, I'll turn to the city attorney for the specifics of what would have to happen to trigger that type of an election.
The city council would need to direct staff to prepare a resolution under Elections Code 4004. That code section in the Elections Code authorizes the city council by resolution to adopt procedures for an all-mail-in ballot if we are a small city and we meet the definition of a small city, and we are filling a vacancy on the city council.
And if we were to look at doing that, is March accurate? Is that an accurate timeframe that we'd be looking at?
That is...
Or is it a whole different time ball, timeframe?
The city clerk has the dates from the registrar of voters for the ability to conduct the mail-in elections.
So if the city council called today for a special election, we would not make it in time for March?
We would not.
We would not. So the next option per the registrar would be either May or August, depending on when you call for that election.
Yeah. So we have to call the election at least, I believe, a hundred and fourteen days before the election is actually held. So if we called the election today, a hundred and fourteen days is April second. So you can see clearly, March would not fall within that. The next available dates are in May and August. And again, that does require a change in policy authorized by resolution of the city council to move from the in-person voting model at the next general municipal election, which is in November.
How much is a mail-in ballot election versus a, how much is a mail-in ballot? Is the price the same as a special election in November as it would be for a mail-in ballot election?
Unfortunately, we don't have cost estimates back from the registrar's office. Getting them to give us a cost estimate is like pulling teeth. So we don't have those numbers just yet. I can continue pushing the registrar's office for a quote specifically for those, but nothing yet.
Mayor, without, I mean, obviously, we can get that estimate, or at least we can ask for that estimate. Having it in the general, at the general election in November, it's consolidated with other elections that are occurring. So you see a cost savings. So I know you had seen estimates, I believe, for what those type of elections cost. The all-mail-in would be standalone. However, we wouldn't have to operate a polling place.
Sure.
So there'd be some savings on the polling place. But you would be paying a vast, significant, and I would say probably the vast majority of the costs relate to printing ballots, printing the elections guide, mailing those things out, and then doing all the processing and reporting.
I don't think that, I'm talking for District One, and the people that have gotten up and talked tonight, and people that texted me and emailed me and everything else, but I don't think they would have an appetite for waiting for five months. So, you know, I, it tells me if it's for, I, I'm probably gonna hear about this, and I'll probably not go over well. But I, I don't think waiting five months is the answer. And obviously, a year is not an answer. While it may not be their pick, if we cannot come to an agreement, then, then I guess I'd, I'd have to change it, and I would then support Bob. But my, my issue, my, my issue is, I'm trying to find a way that they can place their, their vote or get what, not get what they want necessarily, is not what I'm trying to say, but have their voice heard. But I just don't think in the best interest of their district, waiting for five months, I don't think that's appropriate. Do you, what are your thoughts on waiting five months?
Well, I certainly don't wanna leave a, I, I submit the same, the same argument can be submitted for waiting months while we, while we discuss some of these matters that have, that, that in fact, impact a lot of the, the portion of District One relative to litigation settlement.
Red flag.
Oh, all right.
All right. So waiting, waiting those months while we discuss these matters without a representative for District One, I think would serve the same purpose as appointing a representative who cannot speak on the matter. I, I, again, I submit from a broader perspective that Bob, Bob Miller is in a position to help us guide this community, help us heal, help us communicate, and offer a conduit of communication between this council and the residents of District One. I, I'm, I'm gonna remain unwavering on that matter. I believe that's the right thing to do. I, I do believe what's written on the wall behind us. And I have asked for discernment, because this is not an easy decision to make. This is the decision that has been entrusted to us to make, though. And it is our decision to make. And, and I have offered that burden to the Lord. And I feel that I am accurate in my position, that I think Bob Miller is the man who can help us navigate the next seven hundred some odd days while we wait for an, the regularly scheduled election for District One to choose their elected official.
If we went to a written, a write-in ballot, a special election, it would be like any other election, right? They'd decide if they're gonna do a candidacy statement, campaign, all the same type of things, right? So just because they're applicants doesn't mean they're gonna be on the ballot. They'd have to, they would have to go through...
Right. That's why we have that one hundred and fourteen day time limit, because we have to go through that same process. It's, it's a special election.
I would, I would add, the turnout model is very different.
What do you mean?
You get much less voter participation with a strictly mail-in ballot than you do when you also have polling places. The less people participate in the process typically.
What are your thoughts, Chris?
Well, I'm gonna stand behind the citizens that want what they want. That's, that's for... I just, you know, I love Bob, I mean, Bob Miller's a great guy. He really is and stuff, you know. But I mean, they, they spoke. And through everything that they've sent me, and how many people I've talked to and stuff, I'm letting them choose their candidate.
And see, I, I have people that, one or two people that I've talked to that are supportive of Bob. I know Bob's great for it. But at the same token, the support for that district, who they want to represent them, it's not there. And...
I didn't see, I didn't see a voting, sir. I didn't see any elections, we didn't receive a report on the District One support for...
I'm talking about the, the emails and the texts.
I understand that. But then we also, candidates, applicants today expressed that they didn't ask for public support. They thought it would be inappropriate to seek a campaign of, of public support. So perhaps if we allow this to maybe adjourn, before we start calling for a special election, in a time where we're being even criticized about approving a library project in the news mirror, even though we have public support, and we start now writing checks for hundreds of thousands of dollars for an election, let's, I'll make a motion that we continue this item to the January meeting. And perhaps discernment will fall upon the applicants in this, in this race or this portion. And perhaps the residents of District One will find discernment and find, find something else. I, I don't think the decision has to be made right now. I heard somebody say, we'll wait. So perhaps they can wait thirty days while we figure this out, and we come back and discuss this item again at another time. Perhaps applicant or two will resign from the project, and we will be left without a decision to make. If these are all residents of District One who all want best for District One, maybe they can all meet together and have a... If these are all residents of District One who all want best for District One, maybe they can all meet together and have a decision to make. We can't. There'll be some dramatic violations if we start meeting and talking. They're not elected officials. They can meet and talk. So perhaps the three applicants get together and have a discussion. All I'm saying is, we don't have to call for a special meeting and, and commit to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. We also don't need to decide this right now. But I will say, and I'm gonna say it again, my, my support remains unwavering.
Okay, so that motion hasn't been seconded yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so could I make another motion to reconsider?
Sure.
I make a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider what?
Bob Miller?
The vote.
Reconsider Bob, okay. So there's another motion for Bob Miller. I will second the motion, and I will ask the city clerk, call or roll call vote.
So, I'm confused, I'm sorry. So what was, what was the original motion?
We have a motion and a second for another vote for Bob Miller. My motion was, my motion was we continue that until the next meeting.
So your motion was to consider it to the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And then her motion is to redo the vote?
For Bob Miller.
But we don't have to second either one?
I seconded her motion. Hearing no second. Madam City Clerk, will you call a motion or call a roll call vote?
Okay, and so clarification, this is, the vote is to reconsider the vote for?
To appoint Bob Miller for District One.
I hate to be the parliamentary procedure guy. We, we don't have to do a motion to reconsider because no action was taken. I, I'm taking this simply as a motion to appoint Bob Miller to the position, if that's okay.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
My second is accurate as well.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Venable.
No.
Mayor Beaver.
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we'll move on to city council reorganization. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, I, if it's okay, we're gonna go ahead and swear in newly appointed councilmember.
Understood.
Get sworn in immediately, sir.
Understood.
Yes. Mr. Miller, if I can have you join me in the wall here, please.
I'm gonna evacuate the seat. Going down there?
Okay, I'm gonna have you stand right around the side. Did you, did you wanna hold the Bible? Okay. Okay, alright. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, repeat after me. I, Bob Miller.
I, Bob Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which, upon which about to enter.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Superintendent Binks, now, now you get to do it, right?
Thank you.
There it is, alright. Madam City Clerk, city council reorganization.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the Ucaipa City Council. We're going to start by taking public comment, however, I don't have any public comment cards on, on this item, so we're gonna skip over that. The nomination process is outlined in Resolution Number 2023-07, which adopted rules of procedure for council meetings. As outlined in Section 3.1, a nomination for the Office of Mayor may be made by any member of the city council and need not be seconded in order to be effective. I will open the nomination period and close it once all nominations are received. I will then read back the nominations and call for a vote in the order they were received. The selection of the mayor shall be by three or more affirmative votes. The process will be repeated for the selection of the mayor pro tem. Are there any questions before we begin?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will, at this time, I will open the nominations for the Office of Mayor. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to enthusiastically nominate Councilman Thorpe to be mayor for the city of Ucaipa.
I second it.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. Councilmember Thorpe.
This feels awkward, but yes.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Venable.
Yes.
Mayor Beaver.
Yes.
Motion carried. We have a new mayor. At this time, I will open the nominations for the Office of Mayor Protem. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Bob Miller as mayor pro tem.
My motion would be Chris Venable.
Do we have any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Which one?
Yours.
We're gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. We'll start with, we'll start with Bob Miller. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Councilmember Thorpe.
No.
I'm sorry, I should say Mayor Thorpe. Councilmember Woolsey.
Yes.
Councilmember Venable.
No.
Councilmember Beaver.
No.
Okay, we will now move on to the nomination for Chris Venable. Councilmember Millet.
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Venable.
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe.
Yes.
Alright, we have a new mayor pro tem, or once again, mayor pro tem, Chris Venable.
Alright, good job. Before I hand over the, the gavel and the center seat to Mayor Thorpe, I want to thank the, my colleagues on the dais for their support over the last two years, whether it be formal support on the dais or support as community members. Truly, he's been an honor to serve as the mayor of the town I call home. I, it is my hope that the transparency and communication from this seat continues with a renewed spirit and vigor. I hope the Walk with the Mayor series doesn't die with me. I hope it's something you can get out in front of because I think it was well received. Answering the why and explaining the, the ins and outs of our community to our, to our community. Truly humbled and blessed to have served this great community as the mayor, and my work is certainly not done. I just, I don't have to talk so much at meetings anymore, and I'm definitely looking forward to that. So, thank you so much, John. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It's well deserved, and I know that you're gonna, you're gonna lead our community as the mayor with professionalism and integrity and help rebuild that trust that was spoke of today.
Well, thank you, thank you, council. I'm honored, humbled. Thank you for this opportunity. Mayor, you've been up here for two years as the mayor, so I think we have a, a small token of appreciation for you as the outgoing mayor, a plaque for your service in that seat, so we want to thank you and then present that to you. And then we'll, I guess we'll take a quick photo, and then we'll go to a recess.
Hey, wait, I haven't spoken yet, General.
We're not there yet, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But, but, yeah, appreciate it.
Are we all in there together?
Yes, please. Somebody's gotta be over here. You wanna be nice to tie you over here, my friend? I feel so safe with you two.
Alright, with that, I think we'll go to a short recess so we can reorganize our seats and whatever else needs to be done. So what do you need?
If we can just.
Five, ten minutes?
Ten minutes would be great.
Ten minutes? So it is nine twenty-four. We'll come back at nine thirty-four.
Thank you.
All right, we'll call this order, this meeting back to session. Current time is nine thirty-seven. Adam Kirk, would you mind doing roll call, please?
Counsel member Beaver.
Here, present.
Counsel member Miller.
Here.
Counsel member Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Benable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Okay, next we'll move to public comment. Madam Kirk, we'll call the name on the speaker slips, come to the podium, and address city council. As a reminder, you have three minutes. Madam Kirk?
Thank you, mayor. We will start with Kathy Rosenfeld, followed by David Duran.
Hello. Kathy Rosenfeld, one-one-eight-hundred Callaway Court. I've been a resident here for nine years. I'm very involved in the community. Treasurer of Yaps, treasurer of Friends of the Library. Ucaipa is a great city, and I agree that we all need to come together, and I'm here for the library. Now, three of you have heard me before. Mr. Thorpe, you have actually come to the library and seen the need. I appreciate that. We all know there's need. I'm a CPA. We don't have the money, but we can do something as a city. You can do something as councilman. Get in the newspaper. Ask other Indian organization, other big firms, other donors in this town, do you want a library? We're five million dollars short. Help us. I've been approached by one of your employees as the treasurer. They asked our group to hire a professional fundraiser. We're lucky we get ten thousand dollars a year from our citizens to run the summer reading program. I cannot hire a professional fundraiser to find five million dollars, but the city can, and they will. But you have got to get the word out there before you make the decision whether or not to sign a contract. We are not going to get another nine million dollar grant from this state. They're gonna laugh at us. We have fifteen million dollars to go towards the twenty. I know we don't have five million dollars in our coffers, but we can get it, but we need to work together. You're our leaders. Get the word out there. Ask. We can do this. Thank you.
David Duran, followed by Richard Hernandez.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. I'm at three-six-zero-six-four panorama, I mean, council, excuse me. As an octogenarian that I am, it's really past my bedtime, and I've got a bad cough, so excuse me if I shit coughing. This is concerning to wine country. The election of Mr. Trump will affect the North Bench Wide Country Plan that has been supported by the council and the city. In my opinion, the plan is dead because of Mr. Trump's avowal to deport ten million immigrants and his declaration of a twenty-five percent tariff on goods from Canada and Florida. Growing, carrying, and harvesting grapes is labor-intensive. American agriculture will lose the immigrants who care for and harvest crops, and certainly this will affect the wine industry. To the Wine Alliance and proponents of the North Bench Vineyards, you will not have the workers you need for the operation of your vineyards. It's one worker per fifty, I'm sorry, one worker per ten acres. I suggest that you ask Ucaipa educators if they can create vocational studies that will educate students in the care and harvest of grapes. Secondly, the mass deportation of immigrants will impact the home-building industry. Competent migrant labor hired by builders pushed well-paid American workers out of the trades. Foundations, framing, roofing, every trade that was union before builders hired illegal labor to cut costs dramatically. Rightfully America-born trade labor will come back and demand higher pay and benefits. Look for at least a fifty percent bump in labor cost to build the homes in the Vineyard Plan. The cost of tariffs. Every one of you knows that Douglas fir lumber for home building is imported from Canada. You all know that. The imposition of the twenty-five percent tariff will be added to the cost of framing lumber needed to build homes. Thus, the Vineyard Plan must fail because its success has depended on cheap immigrant labor, immigrant field labor that will cease to exist, and because and because home prices will have to increase dramatically due to the upcoming surge in labor and material costs. And Mr. Thorpe, as you did in the wide country vote, let me finish. You sweated...
Thank you, sir.
Looked thoughtful and pensive.
Sir, your time is up.
And as before, you dropped your principles on the floor.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard Hernandez.
Good evening or good night, whichever one you choose to honor, I guess. Congratulations, Ms. Woodsey, and congratulations, Mr. Miller, on your new appointment. I would imagine it's a new appointment. My question is to counsel. You have your meetings on Mondays. Most of the holidays of the year fall on Monday, and my main concern is, are you actually concerned about the residents, or are you just prefer to have the benefit of having the holidays off? I don't understand the reasoning behind that. There's another thing. There was something written in the mirror about the approved development where there's going to be four point or four and a half on backyards. And when I attended that meeting, the majority of people, with the exception of one person, was totally against it, yet all of you agreed on it because someone had said, "We have empty seats at our schools. We need to fill them." Well, what about the residents? You say you're concerned about them and that you need their approval, but yet you went totally against it. And it says it in the paper also, that you went against it, that it's a very big disappointment. Well, yes, I would imagine it's a disappointment to all the residents that are here in Ucaipa. Like I said, I recently moved out here. It's been about four months. I still don't know what district I'm in. Someone had told me once, but honestly speaking, I don't know what district that is. But I hope that in the near future, you take into consideration what the residents actually want. And certainly, you're going to come to a point where you have to make compromises, and that's understandable, but there's such a thing as being clear to everyone. You call it transparency. The reality is, there's no real transparency here, but you claim that there is. And I think that you just find methods of pacifying people rather than being clear, precise, and speaking the truth. And that's all I have to say. Have a great holiday. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to the consent agenda, this is the opportunity for council members to disclose if they have any conflicts of interest. Hearing and seeing none. Moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. City Manager, is there any changes we need to make to the agenda?
No, sir, no changes.
Any city councilmen or women decide they want to pull an item for discussion? Seeing none? All right, do I have a motion for the consent items, one through sixteen?
So moved. I'll second.
First by Justin, second by Chris. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? That moves us to, we have one discussion item, correct?
Correct.
Hold on a second. Anna, is this your item?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you. Item seventeen for your consideration tonight is the 2025 Regional Committee assignments. Staff is recommending that the city council review and appoint council members to the various regional committees and direct the city clerk to notify respective agencies of any changes. For the record, a Form 806 was posted to the website and the bulletin board, so the council may proceed with voting tonight. The current regional committee roster was included as part of your packet. I will go down the list, and the council can let me know of any changes. So, we will start off with the Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy. Currently, we have Council member Beaver as the member and Mayor Pretend Benable as the alternate.
We didn't, we didn't actually meet those months. Was it, were the meetings postponed and for lack of quorum, or what was the reasoning?
You know...
No, I know that. We didn't have one, though.
I'm not sure why they didn't have the meetings. I'd be happy to reach out to them, but that's not something they communicated with us directly.
Okay. No change.
No change.
Chris?
No, I'm good.
Unless, okay. No, okay. No change.
All right, so leave it as it is?
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to Omni-Trans. We're going to need a member and an alternate.
I'll take that one.
So, certainly, it's, I mean, if you'd like, I'd like to try it. The reason being, the reason being is, I think we've worked really closely with the county and Omni-Trans relative to homeless criminality coming to the city by way of our Omni-Trans bus depot. I've met with the county sheriff by way of our Public Safety Committee, and I would like to further discussion from the city's perspective with Omni-Trans to further explore potential transit police or not having so much of a burden on the Ucaipa Police Department for problems born in San Bernardino and delivered to the city of Ucaipa without much input from us. So, I'd like to discuss more maybe in that session as a representative to Omni-Trans, if the council will allow.
I'll second yours.
Okay.
Either one of you have an interest in that? Omni-Trans?
Omni-Trans and... Omni-Trans and the transportation, they meet on the same day, don't they? Within an hour apart. Okay, and you're saying that you've been, you are on that committee now?
I'm not now.
But you would like to be.
I would like to be, for Omni-Trans. And honestly, if it's the same day, recently, my work schedule has allowed me to be more involved in the city of Ucaipa by way of a new assignment, so there's no conflict, but I would like to, if I'm already there that day, on a Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, I can take both seats, but certainly Omni-Trans is where I'm concerned, and I'd like to have a voice, I'd like to give you... I'd like to give Ucaipa a different perspective and voice on that, on that regional assignment.
Okay.
So we need a, we need a main representative and an alternative.
I would be interested in being alternate.
Bob, do you have any interest in either one of those?
Negative.
I'm with that.
So Justin is the primary and Woolsey is the alternative.
Right.
Is anyone okay with that?
Yep.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
No, we're good. If there's a consensus, we're good to move on. Okay, we'll move on to San Bernardino County Transportation Authority.
I'd like to, I'd like to take that one on. I think Councilmember Woolsey also was interested in that.
I was interested in that one also.
And we do need a member and an alternate.
I mean, I deal with all the, a lot of the freeways and stuff like that all the time anyways, and I'm always out there, so I didn't. I could be the member or the alternate. I don't care.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So San Bernardino County Transportation Authority administers our measure I funds and deals with regional transportation projects. One thing to consider when thinking about if you're interested in this committee is that it is somewhat of a time commitment because their meetings are during the day. But a lot of the value we get from representation on this board is helping to position Ucaipa to be on the priority list for getting funds for projects that come to Ucaipa. And so where I've seen cities be successful in that is when their representative to that board spends the time to work their way up to the executive committee and build relationships with representatives from all the other cities and start to exert some influence that way. So, you know, from the city's interest perspective, I would hope that whoever represents the city could engage in that way and build relationships with the goal of working their way to the executive committee and advocating for resources to be sent to the city of Ucaipa.
To elaborate on that firsthand knowledge, that those meetings aren't typically just an hour. They last for a little bit of time, a couple hours. And I think when it talks about SBCTA, that's not just particular one meeting. I think it's a couple of different meetings, correct? Because you have a legislative meeting, a board meeting, and so it's like five meetings in the course of the first two weeks of a month, correct?
Right, so by being the, automatically by being the member, you're also appointed to the study session, which is a separate meeting on a separate day, definitely a little bit of a time commitment. And then also too, SBCTA typically makes the appointment to SCAG, and so that representative could potentially also be representing the city on SCAG.
So what that would look like is normally the first Wednesday, that's obviously the first week. The second week, you're going to have a Wednesday and a Thursday meeting. And those, if you go to all three of those, those all potentially have a chance of going a couple hours. One of them probably goes about a half hour, just from my observation from another avenue of life. So consider that in your decision.
I do. I mean, I'm, I do have that time, but if she wants to.
I have the time also, so.
Well?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest Councilmember Woolsey. I mean, it's her, you know, it's her first time, Anna, let's give her, let her have a shot at it. She's got the time.
You be alternate?
That's fine.
You agree with that? All right, so the consensus is Woolsey is the predominant member for SBCTA, and Chris Benable is the alternate.
Okay. Thank you. The last one on the list is the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force. We currently have Justin Beaver as the member, and we have myself as the alternate. I'm happy to continue serving as the alternate, but if you'd like to appoint a member, that would be up to the council.
The acronym is SWOT, just so you guys know. Yeah.
Well, that I might be interested in, Mayor.
It's confusing when I say I have a SWOT meeting that day. I'm like, wait, what? So Councilman Miller has an interest in this committee as well? Are you? He could be a SWAT team member. And you want to be alternate, or no? No, she's the alternate. Okay. I'm sorry, our city clerk's the alternate. And you want to stay there? All right. I'll agree with that?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have everything I need, and so I will notify the agencies of all the changes, and we will move forward.
Perfect, thank you.
That concludes this item. Thank you.
All right, moving on to councilmember reports. Any councilmembers have any business to report? We'll start from the far right, Justin. My daughter won first place in her division for the Turkey Trot, which means, which means she beat her dad. Yeah, yeah. Certainly, she bragging rights because she asked, "Well, how come you don't have a trophy, Dad?" Okay, go to your room. So thank you, Megan and staff, for putting that on. It was a great event. It's kind of chilly that morning, but it was a phenomenal event. You guys did a great job, as always, in our biggest turnout so far, right? We had like six hundred some odd athletes out there running, and I think the gentleman who finished the one mile was just celebrated his like ninetieth birthday. Phenomenal. So great job, Megan, under your, under your leadership, that, the health of Ucaipa and everything you guys are doing in community service is just great. So thank you for that.
I think Chief, didn't you lose too, to your daughter? You did, huh? Yeah. That's two years in a row you lost? Yeah. I didn't want to, you know, I just, just saying. That was a, it was a great turnout.
How did you do?
You know, I ran it this, that morning at four, just to make sure everything was going good and stuff. But, you know, I did thirteen miles on my, on my, pardon. No, I did thirteen miles on my treadmill that morning. My roller blade got caught on the end. So anyways, Winterfest was amazing. I didn't get a chance to make it. We have, huh? Anyways, what do we have next? We have Christmas. Oh, wait a minute, we have Dueling Pianos coming up. So do we still have tickets for that? So come on down. Pardon? I'm not at fifty, I'm sorry. But, yeah. Anyways, yeah, so we do have tickets left for Dueling Pianos. It was amazing last year. If you didn't get a chance to go, I highly recommend it, so. And congratulations.
Thank you.
John Thorpe, and Tyler, Bob Miller, and Mrs. Woolsey. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Woolsey, you have anything to report?
I haven't been on any committees yet, so no.
Okay. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, just getting ready to get to work, but I do want to highlight Captain Walker. We got to present at the California School Board Association Conference in Anaheim this week, which is school board members from all over the state with Cali Binks and a fire captain from Cala Mesa, and I can't remember Matt's last name. But we presented on school safety and our collaboration between the schools and our police and our fire services. And it was for school safety and wellness, and Captain Walker did an interesting job. I've never heard him talk that much, and I was really pleased with how he presented to the school boards. There were school board members from all over the country in Anaheim, and a lot of folks came up afterwards and really appreciated the presentation. Captain Walker, our chief, presented, or he represented our city so well as Ucaipa Sheriff's Department and represented the Sheriff's Department extremely well and was well-spoken, articulate, and did a great job of talking about that collaboration between the school district and the city and how that really works for us. And I was just really proud of him, and I just wanted to point that out. I thought you did a great job, so thank you for doing that with us.
All right, I want to take an opportunity to thank both of you for, or congratulate you for being up here. I'm looking forward to working with both of you. Welcome to the hot seats, so we have a lot to do. City manager, do you have any announcements that you'd like to make?
No, just that it's been quite a, quite a year, and it's hard to believe this is the last meeting of 2024. Welcome to Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Woolsey. I look forward to working with both of you and to continue working with this council, and I hope everyone has a very Merry Christmas.
Do what? So I think what we're going to do is I'm going to get with the city manager, and we're going to try to figure out how we're going to orchestrate having invocation added into our normal, our normal meeting. So we'll, we'll get that in there. Our next regular city council meeting will be Monday, January the thirteenth. At this time, this will adjourn our regular session, and we're going to move into our closed session meeting.